All right, everyone, it's two o'clock. Get going. So I've called the meeting to order. For Monday, July 4th, 2022, attendance at the start of the meeting is Councillor Kielik, Councillor Mackay, Councillor Broadhead, and Councillor Bremansky and myself in chambers. And I see Councillor Jolly, is Councillor Hughes with us? Oh, and there's Councillor Hughes, virtual. That's 100%. We have a time-specific agenda item, which is Reddit 2, which is the 911 dispatch. So I'm gonna jump over presentations, delegations, and announcements, although I think everyone who's registered to speak wants to speak on that particular agenda item, and we'll come back to consent agenda and adoption of the minutes after. But before we jump into 911, Councillor Mackay, can you make a motion? It's already got it going to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That the July 4th, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
Awesome. Call for the vote.
Mayor, wasn't there the vote from Councillor, that motion from Councillor Kelly to add to it, or no?
The, nope.
He's withdrawing that motion because he was gonna do it?
Oh, council motion. We were gonna do that just at notice of motions time, and he was gonna make the motion to waive. So it's on there. Yeah.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
All right, so do we get the votes all in? Who do we need? Okay. All right, voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. All right, let's jump over to agenda item 7.1, which is Emergency Communication 911 Dispatch. I did hear from Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Hilt said there is no formal presentation from our staff today. But we do have Chad Linz. Is that how you pronounce your name, Chad? Awesome. With M and P, he was, he was absent on our first go around with this conversation, and it sounded like we actually had some very specific questions for him. So I'm gonna open it up to council to start. Oh, no, I'm gonna go to presentation. Sorry, guys, we do have registered speakers on this topic. First off, I have Mr. Greg Harvey. Is this everybody virtual? That's some here. Yeah. Is Greg virtual? Is he with us? There's Greg. Hello, Mr. Harvey.
Good day, Mayor Heron. How are you guys?
Good. So you have five minutes, and then I'm gonna open it up in case council has any questions for you. So go ahead when you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, you'll be making decisions to potentially outsource a core part of emergency services in our community. The importance of having fire dispatch locally has clearly been conveyed to us in our response to the MMP report you received from us via email. On a local aspect, the recent city of Edmonton, or it's the current city of Edmonton, fire rescue job posting for a fire dispatcher, there was this requirement, and I'll quote it, "Must demonstrate an extensive knowledge of the city of Edmonton, streets, roads, major routes, and commonplace locations." Clearly, local knowledge matters for a city like Edmonton. If we were to outsource, would this be a requirement of a potential agency that would take over ours? If that knowledge is important for the city of Edmonton dispatchers, why wouldn't it be important here? It was very concerning that the 35911 calls transferred to fire was the primary driver in this recommendation to potentially outsource. Why was the actual work or dispatch not included? The factual numbers, 3,000 to 4,000 calls, closer to 4,000, once we start doing our Charlie MFR responses again, are significantly and materially different from the number presented in the MMP report. To be clear, these calls are also emergencies, such as the MFR, medicalists, and medical assistance, fire alarm responses, can and have been structured for, or structured fires. These are all emergencies. I think that they were kind of watered down as non-emergent calls that were coming in via other lines. They say these are true emergencies. What we have in front of you is an opportunity to really look at a combined dispatch, which, as the report indicated, would actually be an increase in service to our residents. And emergency services where seconds truly do matter, any increase in how service is delivered is nothing but good for our citizens. When you make your decision today, I'm ploried to take all the factors into consideration, which is public safety, knowing that your dispatch is controlled locally, unlike when we lost EMS dispatch to AHS. We continue to hear, feel, all the horror stories of the issues when we lost our dispatch to AHS. Obviously, we have numerous municipalities within the province trying to get EMS dispatch brought back within their borders. I asked today, please make a decision on all the data, not the 35911 calls that were listed in the report. Our crews rely on our dispatchers who send us to over 10 times as many calls as that on a daily basis. This is, this decision is one that you will have huge ramifications. If dispatch is outsourced, it's not just as easy to say, well, let's look at it and bring it back. There's obviously huge costs of that, including municipality just the west of us that would like to get into the business, but it's just too expensive. There, St. Albert has always been a city that puts emergency services first. Having a local fire dispatch that delivers the quality of service residents expect and deserve is critical to ensure the safety of our community. As we grow and plan for a city of 100,000 people, we just aren't any cities in this province of current size or larger to looking to outsource our fire dispatch services. I thank you for your time today and consideration in keeping our dispatch local.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I'm gonna ask you a quick question about the number of calls. So walk me through a 911 call. You get, you, you get fire ambulance or police, and I, I say ambulance. So that call was answered by 911 dispatch at the RCMP detachment, correct?
Yep.
And so then it's transferred to Alberta Health Services, which is obviously outside of St. Albert somewhere.
Yep.
Okay, and then they find out that it's a Delta or an Echo call. And there's an ambulance delay. That call is then transferred back to fire hall three, fire dispatch.
So that would be pushed via MDT to the, the tablet within our dispatch, and then we roll our apparatus. We don't always get those calls either. We've missed, uh, I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I know that there's been Delta calls that just don't get pushed over. So that's where, like I say, I mean, the consideration of a potential amalgamation where that call taker at Maloney can listen into that call and decide if it's a serious call and get our apparatus rolling immediately versus, you know, sometimes we're getting it five minutes later through there. I mean, that'd be the same on an outside service as well. So there is a huge opportunity here to increase the service that the city gets through a potential combining of the dispatch.
Sorry. Interesting. Okay, that's what I thought. All right, I'm gonna, there's lots of people lined up to ask you questions. So, oh, just Councillor Mackay. Go ahead, Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Mr. Harvey. I like the birds in the background. That's not fair. Um, the, can you, in, in addition to the response back to Mayor Heron, can you outline some of the, I guess, situational response and support provided by a dispatch at, at a action scene, fire scene?
So what happens when we have a confirmed structure fire, we put callouts, we obviously empty the resources we have within the city on a structure fire, then we call back off-duty members, which also includes a second dispatcher. Then that we're able to assign that dispatcher directly to that fire. So they're, they're the ears in the background, everything that's going on within the fire ground. So there's been a lot of scenarios where our dispatchers, dispatchers everywhere can hear things over the radio that command doesn't necessarily do. And they're able to potentially, you know, initiate a media if there was a situation that required it. Able to listen. We know them. They're our family on the other end. I know of other services out there, they don't get that. When they got a fire, they're off, they're, they're not getting the one-on-one dispatch that we would receive here on an active incident.
So I'm gonna follow up on that last point, Mr. Harvey, and I'll probably ask the question, the same question administration. So when you're, when, if we move out to a contract agency, and let's say Parkland or Strathcona County, and I'm only using those as two examples, because I think Parkland, I think our background material identified that they are contracted out to about 51 other fire departments and/or secondary PSAP sites. So with, so if a large structure fire comes in, or a situation comes in in one community, do they have the resources to actually spread out so that they can actually respond in, in like a prioritize from one call to another? So let's say you get a structure fire, if we contracted, we're a larger municipality, we get a structure fire that's fairly large, requiring multiple units, maybe even outside assistance, mutual aid. Do they have the capacity, in your experience, to be able to handle multiple incidents at one time?
I'm gonna say probably not. I mean, each large incident will overwhelm a dispatch center. When you're getting, I mean, even in some of the bushfires that were, went on earlier this spring, they were getting 75 calls just within town here on one bushfire. So if you start getting, you know, a large structure fire in St. Albert, notice you say example, Red Deer was their dispatch service. Well, let's say Red Deer had a big storm going on, and they actively tweet out, you know, our dispatch center is overwhelmed. Well, where, who's gonna be taking those calls from St. Albert when maybe nothing is going on here, but something else is going on there? At least, we've always, as long as I've worked here, we've been able to handle the calls that come in as they come in. They're not getting pushed out to somewhere else. And I mean, we just, we see it when it's not handled locally within, uh, you know, I mean, I'm in DC right now, and they're having a heck of a time with their dispatch. Just, you know, you're waiting nine, 10 minutes to even get through a 911. We have an opportunity here just to continue that, or potentially go down something that we have no control over. It's just, I can't see it as a good thing for St. Albert.
Councillor Kielik also has a question for you. Mike?
Uh, thank you. You mentioned the reference to the 350 fire calls, and that you'd like council to certainly be more aware of, of closer to the 4,000 total calls that come in. And then there's a kind of a linkage to the concern about time to respond, or kind of as we've seen in the media, every second counts. But in that, if you could clarify for me that in the 4,000 total, there were things like building alarm test calls, I believe was like 1,000 of, of the 4,000, and dangerous good permits. Whoa. Okay, that's good. And so my question, my question is to certainly recognize that, as you mentioned, the the 4,000 calls, not the 350, but of, of those total, how much or how many are really the urgent fire calls that would, would kind of fall under that every second counts scenario?
So without having, uh, I believe we've done the math on that, and I would say I think it's around 72% of those calls would qualify as emergencies. So like the MFRs are a big one. I mean, those are, you have to have a person actively dispatching that. That just doesn't get sent to a fire truck, and away you go. That has to have somebody process the call, dispatch it out. The fire alarms that come in on the back 777 line, those, we get a lot of those alarms, and quite a few of them have turned into structure fires. Actually, one where somebody was rescued out of the building in the center of town was a fire alarm call. It didn't come through 911. So I think just it really needs to be looked at and have all of those calls represented when you guys have to make that decision. I just don't think it was fair to, you know, minimize the 350, because if I were sitting in your chair, I'd say, yeah, 350, no big deal. But when it's closer to, we'll say 3, 3,500 calls that have to be dispatched by a fire dispatcher and work on the radio, send it out to the CAD. That's a lot of calls. Is there a center out there that's even willing to take that much work on versus 350? Because I can sit guarantee you, somebody would say, yeah, 350, we'll take that work on. That's one call a day. But the reality is it's between eight and 10 calls a day minimum that they have to take on. So I don't know if that's even possible in this industry right now.
Just follow up, and my, my understanding is that the next gen 911 will have a lot of more intelligence and location smarts in it to be able to take More intelligence and location smarts in it to be able to take, uh, information from cell phones, uh. Give GPS type coordinates, um. Will that help provide that, that local information back to the people receiving the night, the, uh. The calls, it, it, my, my understanding, it's quite sophisticated technology that's being brought in under the new. Uh, E nine one one scenario, next gen.
It could, but I guess in this business, I mean, we're always on top of new technology and new technology has not always done us well. I'll just use our current AFRAX radios. As an example that, you know, we still have a lot of communication issues. That was supposed to be the be all, end all and solving, you know, the portable radios. Uh, we've had it since I worked here. It's fourteen years on the job. We've not had a well-working radio system. And this one, this provincial one, a lot of money was put into it. And we still have issues on a daily basis, uh, not having communication. So it'd be easy to say absolutely this next gen. Could be the be all, end all, but until we see it, I just, I couldn't, you know, say either way. I'm a little leery honestly of technology. I, if it were up to me, I would old school, I'd like to just go back on some of the stuff that we do on this job because technology is not making it easier.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Harvey, I see no more questions from council. So I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. I'm sure you're gonna. Continue to watch us on Zoom. So we'll be, um, I'm gonna move on. I think Noel Johnson is the next register. Is that the right order? Noel, okay. Awesome. I, I, you think what? Okay, so Dean, do you want to come down?
Sure.
Okay, this is Mr. Dean Dumbek. So is Noel coming at all? Do you know?
I know he's watching online.
Okay, all right. So go ahead. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for having me and allowing me the time to speak in advocacy of our local dispatch. I may have covered a few points or will cover a few points that have been talked about a few weeks ago or by, by President Harvey earlier today. But I wanted to stress a couple of important points that kind of I've witnessed firsthand in my career as a firefighter, paramedic. And I've also seen as a bystander who's been on the nine one one call, calling for help. So you may have heard of the chain of survival. Something that has been ingrained in us as paramedics from the start of our careers is getting that emergency services rolling. Every piece counts, every chain counts. Um, if the link in the chain is broken, the chances of the outcome being positive or successful are, you know, they drop almost to zero. But just every point in the chain counts and our dispatchers are our citizens' first line of help when they're having an emergency. Most likely, one of the worst days of their lives. Our dispatchers who know St. Albert, who know the area are the right ones to answer. And dispatch the response in our city. Not only do they know our city, they know our protocols and the response that they're sending out the door. A dispatch that is far from St. Albert could not possibly serve our citizens as well as dispatchers in our own city. Those dispatch centers are often extremely busy, answering tens, if not hundreds of nine one, of services, nine one ones calls and sending out those resources to those calls. Our dispatchers on a logistics side are dedicated ears. There are. Quasi eyes when we can't look at a map or can't look at a GPS satellite photo. There are safety backup when it comes to maydays and missed items on the radio. And there are logistics line for everything we need on a fire scene that we can't get ourselves. Just recently, I was on highway two north of the city. I witnessed a collision during a thunderstorm. You never think when you call nine one, you're not gonna get anybody but a voice. As soon as I called nine one one, I got an automated voice message from the P S app telling me to keep on hold. And that repeated once, twice, three times. I kind of lost count. I was shocked that it happened. Once I was taken to the P S up, I was passed on to the RCMP who I requested as paramedics. My wife and I assessed people and no ambulances required. So I asked the RCMP, put through the RCMP dispatch center at the K division presumably. And I was put on hold again because there were no dispatchers available to take the call. Couple thirty seconds, a minute went by, dispatcher came available and I was next in line. So I was able to tell the information and everything like that. Fortunately, that incident was not life-threatening and there was no urgency at the time. But I can only imagine on some of the many calls that I've personally attended, that if a person was put on hold and resources delayed, the outcome could have been drastically different. And those are anecdotally across many, many of our careers in the fire service and as paramedics as well. So this is just one example of many. If we lose our dispatch, our local dispatch, we will never know just how many times like that, that it would have made a difference. And likely many times with the end up, the end result saving life. In the report, it commented as to why our city was one of the few who dispatched their own RCMP. Um, Greg is Greg's mother used to be a RCMP dispatcher. Uh, my sister works for EPS as a dispatcher and it is kind of anomaly. Seems the history is vague. We can simply, I've always done it that way, kind of response. Whereas most RCMP is dispatched at the K division. But I can say for certain that that level of service that's provided in St. Albert by RCMP being dispatched, answered and dispatched here. That decision was made in the best interest of the citizens and the service. Having called nine one one as a bystander, even in our own community over my thirty-eight years of living and working here. I can tell that the communications officers at Maloney Place truly care about their citizens and the emergency at hand. I kind of, I don't want to relate to other call centers, but if you call, uh, tell us or it's, it sounds like there's a, a party in the room. There's so many people on the line. When you call our dispatchers, it's quiet. They're there, they're listening to you, they're attending to you and they're able to get the information from you. And get the resources rolling. Customer service is best provided by our own staff to our own citizens. That's what our dispatchers and ECOs do. I sincerely hope that you can make the decision that's best for our community and that's keeping our dispatch in St. Albert. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Uh, any questions? Mr. Killik, go ahead.
Just a clarification that the example where you were put on hold, um, was on highway two. That call did not come to St. Albert. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, it was Sturgeon County is covered by Parkland, um, and they answer P S app and dispatch for the local fire service there as well.
Thank you.
Good to know. Any questions from Council Hughes or Council Jolly? No. I think that's all we have. Okay.
Thank you.
Sit tight because we're gonna get to the, we're gonna, um, ask questions of administration now. So who wants to go first? Council McKay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just follow up in questions since I was one that indicated I had a question for administration. And I guess it's a similar question that I provided to Mr. Harvey and I'm, I guess. Mr. Cook, if you're, um, and I mean, um, so. We don't know yet because we don't know who we're gonna, who's gonna be potentially a contractor, if that's the decision of council today that we're gonna move towards. As part of that, or do we have any knowledge or have you have any? And maybe I'm asking for personal experience and if you're not comfortable providing that, I'm, I'm fine with that too. But are we familiar with any situations where? A large kind of a call answering center would be, would have the capacity potentially to take on, uh, a, a service needs of. Like of a CDR size?
Excellent. Thank you, uh, through, through the charity, Council McKay. Um, there are a variety of dispatch, uh, dispatch services. Uh, that provide contract services to, to municipalities throughout the province. They, they do again vary in size. There are some that are larger. Red Deer, City of Grand Prairie is examples, but then we do have the, uh, the examples such as Parkland County that are on a smaller scale. That likely wouldn't have the capacity and that's an assumption, but likely wouldn't have the capacity to take on a city such as the city of St. Albert. We did communicate the last time we were before council that is a part of the RFP process, which would likely take upwards of a year. Uh, we would be very diligent in ensuring that, uh, the requirements of the city of St. Albert were met. Uh, what those are would be that our calls would not be stacked as, uh, Mr. Dumbek, uh, has indicated he lived through. Uh, and of course that we would have dedicated, uh, a dedicated dispatcher assigned to one of our events, should we have a working structure fire or any event that needed it. Uh, those are services that are provided by some, not all. Uh, again, that would be a part of our RFP process.
Yeah, and so just on that RFP process, and I heard it earlier term, um, kind of like, uh, like as we, as we probably. Ask, uh, I can imagine it's like any contract, the more you ask in a contract, the more challenges, the more costs, right, associated to it. And I know there was. A number in administrative background around, uh, there was a range could be up and it's per person, right? So we're not talking about a service necessarily, it's by population based. But as we add on some of those complexities in an RFP, our cost goes, right? And we don't know what those costs are. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. Today we don't, uh, through MMP, uh, when they, uh, did an environmental scan, they found that range. Uh, and I understand and maybe Chad can add a little bit more to this, that there were no hard numbers, if you will, given, uh, as it was simply that. It was, it was a review or a scan. Uh, we did also commit that should council decide to explore contracting out our services, that if anything came back that was a significant cost, we would return to council. Bringing those numbers back to you both.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, we, we've got this potential savings of three hundred and forty thousand dollars in a year in actual costs, but. That's based again on what we know now, before we've actually put out an RFP with all of our requirements, right?
That's a fair assumption, yes.
So it could be more or it could be a lot less, right? All right, okay. I have other questions later, but I'll let them.
Okay, sure. I've got a few lined up. So Council Killik, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you. The, i- if there was a potential, um, contracting note. The, the service levels that we currently have in St. Albert, uh, and I'm. Making a mistake here, but you know, ninety percent of our calls answered in X seconds. Um, would your experience suggest that we could maintain those same service levels? Um, i- it, and, and is that, is our standard level of service kind of a common? Across the industry or do we have a, a better, different, worse set of, of, uh, response time? Uh, standards than everywhere else in the industry? Where, where, where do we kind of sit there?
Uh, through the charity, Council Kilic, um, by no means does administration, uh, would. By no means do we want to ever allow any sort of reduction in service. Uh, that would be your response time, sir. Uh, being, uh, introduced into the city of St. Albert. Absolutely not, of course not. Um, with response to respond to the call answering times, that is a, uh, that would be again, a requirement that we would expect from any service provider. Again, should council direct us to go that direction. Um, if, uh, Aaron Geisberg is on the line and he should be with us, I'm actually just going to ask him to. Uh, comment a little bit on the answering times and those requirements if he could for us. He's, he's our technical expert matter.
I thank you. Um, so what I could add to what Chief Cook has, has said is, is that there are provincial. Nine one one standards across the province that are standard for all nine one one centers. Uh, there's, there's provincial standards that must be met and that's, uh. A condition of getting nine one one grant revenue. And that is for the call answer of the nine one one. So when you allude to the, the ninety for the. Answering, um, ninety percent of nine one one calls within ten seconds, that's, that's what we're talking about, the nine one one standard. As far as the other service standards go, having the number of staff available to, to dispatch or to answer non-emergency calls. Or to, to, uh, be there during the whole entire, uh, event of a, of a fire situation, those vary. Um, because there is not a provincial standard that sets what the minimum is for that. The, the minimum standards that we're talking about for the ninety percent is nine one one call answer only. Hopefully that helps clarify.
So, so our St. Albert standard is, lines up with the provincial standard, which would also line up with a contracted out. Standard, we don't set, uh, a, a, a higher level or higher expectation above the provincial. Uh, guidelines.
Correct. Not for the initial nine one one call that comes in.
Right. Yep, okay. Might have another follow-up question here, but, uh.
You wanna do it now?
Uh. Uh, no.
Okay.
I'll turn it over.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, through your administration, uh. For, for the people and the, the public here, can, can, can you just? Review what's actually on offer here. This is not the primary, uh, dispatch. This is not, the, if you dial nine one one, that's not what we're talking about. Here, this is secondary, uh, ex- explain the difference.
Certainly, uh, the council broad, through the chair to council broadhead. Um, when you dial nine one one, uh, with the recommendation that is before council today. The initial call will still be answered by our primary call center. That is at Maloney Place. That is the RCMP detachment.
All calls going to nine one one.
All emergency calls within the city St. Albert that dial nine one one, yes.
Fair enough.
The change that would be put into place should direction be given to contract. The secondary P S out or fire dispatch would be the routing or where that call should fire be requested. End up, will it end up here in the city St. Albert with our dispatch center located at Fire Station Three? Or would it end up with a contract service provider in another municipality located within the province of Alberta that provides dispatch services?
And what does that secondary, uh, dispatch do?
That secondary dispatch would provide many of the same services that we receive today from our current, uh, fire dispatch center. The differences that we would, uh, that we would see would be questions relating to permitting. General inquiry questions, uh, that reach our dispatch center likely through the back door, uh, back door number. And also to the procedures that are used by many of our public work staff for working alone, where they contact our dispatch center to advise of. Activities they're up to so that they have someone checking in on them, uh, from time to time when they're, after hours.
Fair enough. So from the list, uh, in the management response to the question, I, I read. Uh, building alarm test, call or refuse service, dangerous good permits, not sure what exclude means. Then we got a fire and then we got a fire false alarm. Fire, public hazard, fire, uh, rescue, fire service call, hang up, location unknown. Information slash others, public works after hours, transfer to other agencies. And then medical first response and or EMS medical assist. All of which make up the four thousand.
Right.
Okay, so talk to me a little bit about the medical first response and EMS. So it's, what is that?
The calls that are received for medical first response and EMS medical assist, those are calls that are initially directed from the primary dispatch center. So the P S, the RCMP detachment center that go direct to Alberta Health Services. So that's a medical call. Now it could be, uh, city St. Albert ambulance that responds to that unit. However, it is treated as an Alberta Health Services ambulance call. And there, and even our ambulances at that point are dispatched by Alberta Health Services. The medical.
So let me just pause you there for a second. So nine one one, it goes to Alberta Health Services. And the ambulance is actually dispatched by Alberta Health Services.
That's correct.
Okay, now it comes to the secondary. What do they do?
Correct. So what would happen then if we have a list of criteria? That if an event, a medical event is to occur within the city of St. Albert, if it hits a specific criteria that is pre-selected and is in place today. By, put in place by the, by the fire service. If it hits one of those benchmarks or triggers, if you will, it then. Activates or initiates a call from Alberta Health Services. Back to the fire service to dispatch a fire engine, as an example, to go to that call to provide additional assistance to the ambulance crew. That is already on scene or in some cases provide a first response should no ambulances be available.
Okay, so that, that could in fact be an emergency.
It, it is definitely absolutely. It's a medical emergency, a hundred percent.
All right, fair enough. All right. So, and the reason why I ask this question is because I, many of the emails that I got really confused. What we're actually talking about outsourcing with primary nine one one call response. And so what I'm trying to understand here is that. Out of the four thousand, and so I'll use twenty seventeen numbers because that's the highest number, so I might as well use that. Forty-three, sixty-seven, fifty-seven calls in a year. Of which half of those are, are approximately this medical first response. If you stay, and, and I'm assuming this is staff twenty-four seven. Yes, yeah. So that's a, that's a call an hour.
Potentially, uh, it, it could be, you're absolutely correct. It could be on average, it would be a call an hour. It could be stacked calls even as again, Mr., uh. Uh, Dunbeck has experienced himself. Uh, but yes, that could work out to a call an hour. I believe, uh, Greg Harvey's numbers were closer to seventy percent for the actual emergency calls. By their calculations versus non emergency.
Well, I'm looking at the list and it would be a stretch to get to seventy-seven, but hey, what do I know? Um, all right. So in any case, I, at the maximum, even if they were all. Emergency calls, that would be. Forty-three, fifty-seven, which. I don't know, whenever, every two hours or whatever it is, right? All right. So they, they, there was some representation made today that. Uh, the secondary dispatchers monitor, if there's an event, they monitor the radio traffic. Do, do they manage the incident? Does this dispatch, secondary dispatch manage the communications for an incident that's in play?
Uh, to Counselor Broadhead through the chair, uh. Do they manage the incident? Our dispatchers or any fire dispatch service for that matter does not manage fire ground operations. What they do, however, is manage rate much or they manage many of the requests that are being made by the on scene incident commander for us. That's a platoon chief. Uh, as well as there are the eyes and ears or the ears, if you will. Uh, of the event going on, so that if any transmissions are made on a fire ground that are missed, that is a probability. The dispatcher is another individual that can pick up on that missed, that missed transmission and act upon it, which could, which is a light safety net.
And those things are, you know, examined during the post incident. Just to make sure, find out why it got missed in the first place, right?
I, I can't read it off the top of my head. I can't, I can't recall any that have been missed. Um, however, it's not to say they haven't been, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, uh, well, well, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Brumansky.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, through the mayor to administration. Uh, looking at the call centers, um, you know, the provincial standards are pushing them to a ninety percent priority, so. I wouldn't want to be in that ten percent priority if, if you know, that's a standard and St. Albert's holding a fairly strong, uh, priority. Sequence right now. So my question is, say there was a tornado. And there was several regions calling into that center all at one time. How do they prioritize who gets assistance first?
Uh, that's, uh, through the chair to Counselor Brumansky. That's an excellent question, and I'm going to turn to Aaron Geisberg again. I believe he can provide a little bit more insight on more of a regional or a provincial level of what may happen in that situation.
Thank you, um. I, I think when it comes to the prioritization at a larger call center, um, I can, I can speak from a. More of, of what we see with the, with the RCMP in the larger centers and in, in A O C C. Um, I think when it, when it comes to some of the nine one one and their, uh, primary centers, they're going to be very similar. In that it's an, it's an operational decision that will be made by that center at that time, given the scenarios that are going on. So clearly, as, as a nine one one call comes in, you're gonna, the dispatcher's not gonna know what that nine one one call center or what that nine. One one call is coming from or what the emergency is or the perceived emergency. So until that, um, dispatcher is able to answer that call and make that initial assessment. As to what the emergency is, I think after that point, they'll then make the decision as to. You know, dispatching, um, that out tip. Typically, it does happen in, in sequence, though. Um, in my experience where, where, you know, the calls will be coming in, they'll be answering them and dealing with that at the time and dispatching it. They typically wouldn't put them on hold to answer the next one. They would dispatch that or deal with that at that time. But it's, it's, I think, um, it's, it's a tough one to give a very black and white answer to, because I think it's going to be. A discretionary and an operational decision at the time of the event.
About the concern that is it local staff that's working at the call centers?
And local staff working at the calls.
Like the staff that works at these call centers, for example, do they live in the region with like, you know, say a. Tornado came up and you've got to look after your own region and region here and there, and. You're deciding at that point in time where you're going to focus. So is it, is it generally the people that live in the region that manage that call center?
I see, uh, uh, through the charity counselor Brumansky, I'm, I'm going to ask Aaron Geisberg again to confirm, uh, the, the point I'm about to make. Uh, however, once a dispatch center is at capacity and we have that stacked calls or multiple calls coming in. I believe there is a short period of time until those calls are rerouted to another center. Uh, and they're handled. So to answer your question, I believe initially it would be local knowledge, however. Uh, with multiple calls in the queue waiting to be answered, yeah, you could find yourself in another area of the province being answered by dispatcher with no local knowledge of the area. Aaron, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's, there's built in, uh. Redundancies in the nine one one system that if a fire were to break out in that nine one one center or they get overwhelmed. Um, they will start to get answered, uh, by the primary PSAP or that PSAP's backup. PSAP, there's our agreements in place for overflows. That happened, um, and normally that would occur if the nine one one call wasn't answered within about ten rings. Um, then it will get passed on to the, to the next one, which could be. Um, anywhere within the province that that PSAP has an agreement with.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
All right, uh, Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so just. Just break it down for me and assume I don't know anything. So I just, a few things I'm, I'm a little lost on. So I understand if it's a fire, we'd go to the fire and under the four categories, I look at the call type, I'm assuming that all four of those will go to the fire dispatch. Is that correct? You go to nine one one and then go to fire dispatch. Would that be correct?
Uh, through, through the charity counselor Hughes, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so if someone's calling about a permit or a building alarm test. Would those also go to the dispatch or another scenario is being proposed, would they go? To the fire department? The reception or something like that?
Currently, right now, those calls are being answered by our, by our dispatch center. Uh, through the nine one one number or through another number into that center. Uh, should direction be given to proceed, uh, contracting an external service provider? Many of those services would be divided amongst administration staff currently working at the fire hall and the primary PSAP located in.
Okay, so if they were to call and they're looking for this, it would, it would not go to the dispatch that's being suggested. The only calls that would be going forward would be the for fire. Would the, is that correct? Just want to make sure I got all this correct, so I don't envision something that's not correct. So if they call in and then the dispatch from nine one one or someone else realizes it's not directly for a fire emergency. And then they would say, we're forwarding you to fire administration. Is that right?
Uh, through the charity counselor Hughes, uh, in my experience, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so the next thing is, um, medical first response. So that is an emergency. But would that actually be transferred then to the dispatch or would it be transferred to AHS?
Uh, that would, uh, when that call initially comes in, when a medical call initially comes in or is made to nine one one, it's, will still be answered by the primary PSAP. Primary public safety answering point, which is at Miloney Place. When the individual who makes that call asks for, asks for an ambulance or medical assistance, it is then transferred to Alberta Health Services. When specific criteria is met. And it's identified that additional resources, a medical first response is required, uh, from the local fire department. It is then transferred to the fire dispatch center that is dispatches, dispatching that fire service agency. So for example, today it's still, it's then sent to our fire dispatch center.
Okay, so when I look at twenty seventeen, just to follow up on Counselor Broadhead's start there, the twenty-two sixty-two, are those the number of calls that? In previous, well, in twenty sixteen, were sent to fire dispatch because of. Medical issues or is that just the total first response and not the number that would have gone to dispatch? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I, I believe I do, and, and through the charity counselor Hughes is the information that was presented to me. Uh, those were the number of calls that were rerouted from Alberta Health Services to our fire service dispatch center requesting that medical first response or. Ass- assistance to a medical call already in progress.
Okay, so with that, that's probably how we get close to that seventy percent that you're referring, or someone was referring to about it being an emergency. Okay, so we're really looking at not three hundred and fifty calls, but potentially. The twenty-two, we're probably closer to three thousand calls is what I'm seeing here off the top of my head. Um, that would have been. Sent over if I'm reading that correctly. And then the other ones for like public works after hours, transfer other agency. Information, other, I'm assuming that those would also go to administration. It's so, I'm just trying to figure out how many are actually going to, would go to the new fire dispatch if it was done. Those other ones. Um, with those, I'm assuming would also go to administration.
Uh, through the, through the charity counselor Hughes, uh, they would end up going to administration or. Uh, another avenue that may be decided upon by the department that requires those services as an example. And by no means am I suggesting this is the route that's being taken. Uh, there are call answering services that may be, uh, may be utilized by, and again, I use public works as the example. Uh, for after hour, uh, working alone procedures.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, a couple more questions. So the amalgamation, this may not be to you. I'm not sure who's going to need to look at. I don't know, somebody hopefully that needs to be there. Um, the amalgamation option, it's been presented a couple of times, um, by the people coming to speak. Have we really looked at this as an alternative or is it just kind of been like, uh? Mentioned, but not really investigated.
Uh, through the chair to, to Counselor Hughes, uh, this was investigated to, uh. In my words, at a lower level, as it was not a, uh, as I understand, when the criteria for the M and P report was designed. It was not the primary focus, if you will. Now, I am going to ask, uh, Mr. Lanes from M and P to actually step in and actually answer that question for you. In more detail.
Hi there, uh, thanks for having me, uh, here today. So I, I'll do my best there. There, I, I guess the way I would say it is, we knew there were lots of unknowns with amalgamation at the time, and, and certainly we met with the project team several times on some of those to see. You know, which ones were we kind of prepared to tackle inside the scope of this? Uh, exercise and which ones were things we just probably wouldn't have the answer to within the, in the timeline that we were working on. Um, there's a few of them. One, of course, was building space. We knew that was an issue. We, we knew there wasn't space in the fire hall. We knew there wasn't space with the RCMP. Uh, we knew we'd have to have other space. We didn't know exactly where that would be, what it might look like, whether an opportunity would present itself in the near future that would be a, an easy solve. Or whether we'd be talking about new construction or, or some version thereof. Uh, so we didn't know that. There were also some questions, uh, a little bit around, um, some of the IT pieces. Um, you know, we know that the RCMP are, are able to utilize, or sorry, the, the, the. RCMP in, in St. Albert are, are able to use some of the RCMP technology. Um, from an NG nine one one point view, we knew they wouldn't be able to from a dispatch point of view, but all the details of that and what the cost of that. Would be, we didn't know exactly. We knew we, you know, that would have to be pursued. And there were some other, wouldn't say unknowns, but things we knew we'd have to tackle related to. Uh, human resources, you know, different unions, different work schedules, different things. There were things in there we didn't. Have the answers to as well either. So. We did talk to the team about several of those along the way, and, and in the report, we've often just made a note to say, we're certainly aware of these things, but we don't have the answer to those things right now. So, you know, to, to, um. You know, the, the, the chief commented, certainly we looked at it. But maybe not at the level of granularity that we might have with others, only because. Uh, there was some unknowns that we, we didn't have answers to at the time. Bear in mind, we started this almost a year ago as well. Um, so I don't know whether there's been changes in some of those areas or not, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, things change all the time. Cause when I look at the report from May sixteenth. It says like the financial is a weighting of six point four. Not like, I don't know how the number six point four came to be, but it says six point four versus the business patches six point eight and the status quo six point three. So it would look like if we did amalgamation, just by. The numbers that you do anticipate a small potential cost savings.
From the status quo?
Yeah. Like that is close to six point three financial with the number and then amalgamation says six point four. And then the dispatching is a seven point eight. So it, it would appear that you're. High level, such a change, don't notice, thinking that there would still be a potential for some small cost savings if it was amalgamated.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm reading out of that?
I, I believe that's correct, and I apologize again. Some of this was done a little while ago. We knew there was some additional cost to it for sure. There was a training cost and some other things that had to be in there. I think we assumed there would be. Some ability to use the critical mass of people to get just a hair more efficient. I think, Aaron, if, if you recall our conversation, one of the unknowns, we weren't. Dead on though, is we weren't certain how many seats that would really require. We, we made an estimate of it. Uh, understanding that, you know, that might be one of those learn as you go things that. You know, we think it's eight seats, holy smokes, it's nine, well, no, it should have been seven, you know, we, so we, we took our best shot at it, knowing what we knew, uh, at the time.
Okay, I mean, everything is kind of a, a shot as well. Um, Mr. Geisberg, I have a question for you. The, the mention of the ten seconds response time is a standard. So when that gentleman came and said that he, he had an experience where. Um, it was answered but put on hold, would that technically have met the requirements because it was answered? It was just put on hold because there was nobody available. So, um. Is that correct?
That was thought, that was not a St. Albert dispatch.
No, just, no, I'm, I'm not claiming it is. I'm just trying to see if there's like a loophole where we say you've answered it, but we actually aren't responding to the call at that time.
Yeah, Counselor Hughes, that's a very interesting example that was used because that is, uh, one of the, the early. Um. Lessons that are being learned with the nine one one standards across the provinces, that there has been some PSAPs. Who have been answering their nine one one calls with an automated service in order to meet the standard of. Of answering the call within ten seconds. Um, however, uh, I, I know that's, I, I believe that's being changed in the current, um, standards or the next iteration of, of those standards. I, I don't want to speak for the province on that, but I just know that there were some discussions about that. Um, in St. Albert, we currently do not use any, um, automated features to, to answer the call times. Uh, but we, we do know that some other PSAPs are using that.
Okay, so technically right now, as the law exists, doing an automated answer meets the requirements for the nine one one calls. Is that right?
Uh, yes, I believe in the current standards that is, uh, permissible.
And we at this moment don't have an automated answer, so we couldn't. Get around those requirements. We have to have a live person that answers them at ten seconds, right?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, maybe to Everett, um. I just really. Personal curiosity that you talked about the set of criteria for Alberta Health to send it back to St. Albert for M F R. Do we set that criteria or does, uh, AHS?
Uh, no, we set that criteria, Madam Mayor. Uh, we select which calls our M F R or medical first response crews will respond to. Prior to the pandemic, we were responding to, um, in, in a layman's terms. Half of our Charlie, Charlie calls on average, all of our deltas or most of our deltas and all of our echo calls. That was reduced when COVID nineteen took hold. Um, and we are currently working through increasing, uh, or re, or returning back to our pre pandemic responses, uh, right now.
So that's a service level that. Uh, that we set for ourselves.
Correct, and, and if I may, uh, an echo call is a cardiac or respiratory rest, a delta call is an event that's leading to. To that type of event and a Charlie call is something or is a type of call where. Again, it's of a serious nature. There are, uh, there would be repercussions if it wasn't addressed quickly. And, uh, obviously medical assistance would be required.
Okay. It's a service level that council never really has a conversation about, Mr. Hiltz, about what levels of calls we're willing to support. And, uh. Provide that service for whether and what that cost would be. So it's, it's not really for today. Because we're, no matter what we decide today, we're still maintaining an integrated service, correct? Okay, good. So that's a, so it's a future conversation I think we should probably have, and I'm glad to hear we're going back to pre pandemic. Um, I'm going to go back for second round of questions, Counselor McCaffrey.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks, uh, for the great questions so far. Many of them I had. To ask, but I do have some technology questions, just for confirmation perspective. So regardless of. Which direction we are looking at today. There are still some technology that we will require, such as a new CAD system. Is that correct? A new CAD system for fire and for. Uh, other, uh, potentially city operations. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. CAD, a new CAD system would be required regarding. Uh, that is correct. CAD, a new CAD system would be required regardless of direction that we had.
Then do we know approximate cost? That's five, that's that five hundred and fifty thousand in our paper.
It it is estimated around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, Joanne Graham is with us. She's from our information technologies group. Um, she could provide a bit more details for.
Certainly.
Thank you to Counselor McKay through the chair. Um, the estimates that we have on the CAD system, we have two sets of estimates. One is based if we implement it on premise. The other is if we manage it as a hosted service in the cloud. So as a, as a result, we do have a range, and at this point in time, we're looking at a range of about three hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is a number of factors that come into that range. Um, those numbers do include um, as well, the resources needed for requirements, et cetera, for that CAD. We will require the system regardless. If we outsource the one module that dispatches, that actually does the dispatch, would not be required, so we'd have a slightly lower cost. If we handle dispatch internally, we will still need that module. So that hands the range that's a three fifty to five fifty.
Okay, thanks. So so then just to follow up, make sure I got that clear, John. So if a decision is to outsource it to a contracted PSAP, we wouldn't require a a higher level CAD system, or we wouldn't require a CAD system for fire? Can you clarify for me?
Certainly. So we we use the term CAD system to actually refer to the entire system that is used to to manage um, the fire function. So the dispatch component is just one module. So there are a number of other components that we'd still need to have because we still need to manage that call once it has been dispatched to us. So the um, for instance, our current system is called the Fire Dispatch Management, and it includes modules for inspections. Um, it tracks all of the activity while on a call, all of the uh, the different units that responding, when they're responding, et cetera, communicates with the mobile system that's in the trucks, which we will still need. So the system itself is the full management system for the fire, and that is what we're going to need to replace. We tend to use, just generally call it a CAD system, but the dispatch part is just one module of that entire fire management system.
But we would still need, if not only for fire, uh, police, for our own planning department, we need to update all of our spatial, our GIS, everything, everything like that as well. Is that a component of CAD, or is that separate standalone?
So the the GIS data that you're referring to, and I think uh, with that question maybe coming, is the fact that the uh, we do need to um, ensure that our spatial data is updated within seventy-two hours as part of the requirement for NG nine-one-one. So that, the whole system that we will use to ensure that we have that up-to-date spatial GIS information is a separate system. And those costs as well have not been included in the options because that will be required no matter what option we choose, because it's the city St. Albert's response ability to ensure that the spatial data is up-to-date and accurate, that that is a completely different system than the CAD system.
Yeah, thank you. I I I just wanted that clarification. Just a sidebar, have we done it all for the new uh, amalgamated areas? Have we got all the maps for that yet?
Yes, we do. That was part of the annexation processes.
Um, thanks for that additional. I knew you'd know that, but I was curious. Um, then, do we have any actual direct costs as to what the NG nine eleven nine eleven will cost us? Do we know those hard costs yet or potential costs?
So we um, previous to this, the whole discussion we're having now, we actually did contract um, an organization to give us some estimates. They provided us with five different scenarios. Um, they're based on different options for on-premise technology versus in the cloud technology, and that has provided us with a range of costs. We do not have any specific costs at this time because we have not yet gone to market for any of the equipment for the technology.
There's usually, but I think there's only two providers of NG nine eleven, Solocom, and I can't remember the other one. I I mean, I, it's pretty limited anyways. You don't, I don't expect, I was more of a general comment, I think. Um, I have one question actually to M and P, if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, sir. Thank you very much. I I, again, I appreciate your report. I hope you're uh, I um, I was gonna say, I hope you're, I was trying to remember if you was on holidays last time you were met.
It was.
I, I hope you enjoyed your holiday. Um, the the, I'm going back to the waiting again, and based on the the response that you gave to Counselor Hughes, how do how confident are we in the waiting if there were so many unknowns in relation to coming up with the decision? I mean, if if there's unknowns and and it it could impact one of the ten percents more than the thirty-five percent or vice versa. So how confident can we be in the waiting if we, if there's so many of those?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there's, there's always challenges when you're taking some subjective elements and trying to make them as objective quantitative measures as you can, you know, certainly, I think there's slippage in there for sure. You know, we we went back, uh, just as a team kind of out of interest, and with the almost a year of hindsight, kind of re- rescored it again, you know, to see where it would, where it would come out. And and we kind of came out in the same spot, you know, I it it wasn't super surprising to us in that, you know, I think the number one thing we heard when we talked to people about kind of what, what, what are some of the drivers was, was dollars and cents for sure, that you know, costs are going up, budgets going up, taxes are going up, you know, is 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 there a way that we can provide this service efficiently and effectively and and try and mitigate some of those costs? So that's why you see it get a bigger chunk. On the other hand of that, of course, we also heard that, you know, folks in St. Albert don't want to see that service dissipate, and who would want to particularly with things, you know, as important as emergency services? Um, you know, so I I think you could go in and score it, you know, every week and get it slightly different. Um, as I mentioned, we rescored it again, and the answer was pretty much the same. The only thing I would say is, we were a little harder on amalgamation because we hadn't really kind of, I think, put in as much detail to that one around some of those costs. So when we rescored it the second time, it it was, I think, below status quo, not above status quo. Um, you know, we're confident that we used the information that was there to the best of our abilities at the time. Um, and as a result, are confident in that recommendation. I think the 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 caveat to that being inside of the parameters we measured against, of course, cost was a big one of those, because I don't think we would ever uh, deny that, you know, local service um, and non-local cert, uh, dispatchers would be as effective, you know, as local ones. Uh, we tried to score that effectively as well. You know, when we, when we um, outsourced them, those those uh, scenarios got a poorer score. But we were asked to offset that against cost as well, which was the other piece of the puzzle, so.
Yeah, I appreciate your candor on that. I mean, like, I I mean, how much money do you, how how can you cost out a a life, or how much, how do you cost out uh, delay in in timing? But that's not your, that's not your problem, and I'm I'm only saying that for comment. Um, I have a, thank you very much, sir. I have a question maybe probably to Aaron, but I also noticed that the detachment commanders in in the audience as well, and it goes to, Aaron, do you know how many primary PSAPs are operated by the RCMP? Are we one of the only few?
Um, yes, we are one of the only few. I I believe it's us and uh, the city of Lloyd, Lloydminster, are the two detachments that have a local RCMP dispatch that are part of, that are also acting as a primary nine-one-one center for the community.
All right. Does that give us an opportunity that we're maybe missing here? Uh, I, or let me ask this question. Do you know how busy uh, the Northern Alberta um, Operational Communication Center is or NAOCC? We all like our acronyms here.
In Councilor McKay, um, I can, I can share with you my anecdotal uh, knowledge of that, and I I do know that they are busy. Um, uh, Inspector Commonick, um, I'm not sure if he's he's online or or in council chambers. He might be able to speak a little bit uh, more of that. But even uh, Mr. Lins with uh, M and P, I do know that they had conversations with uh, NAOCC um, during their review. He may be able to add some, some uh, more recent um, comments around it as well. But I, you know, they are busy. Again, I can confirm that.
Well, I'm, and the the just of my question, Madam Mayor, is is just that, I mean, we've heard some of the challenges that we're seeing with uh, uh, all the other PSAPs that we have, whether they are fire run, operated as primaries and fire or primaries. Now, I'm just wanting to see if there's a balance on the other side in relation to NOCCs, and I think there's an opportunity here that we're potentially missing with amalgamation. So I don't know whether I I think uh, I'm going to be satisfied that you, with your anecdotal answer, I think, Mr. Giesbeck, because I I think I believe it's busy. Uh, I know that uh, in my previous life, the communication centers that I was in charge of were extraordinarily busy. So uh, and it's only getting busier, so there's perhaps an opportunity missed here. So anyways, I'll pass.
All right, thank you. I've got Counselor Kilic, and then I have Counselor Jolly, and then Counselor Broadhead.
Uh, thank you. Just, just to kind of build on uh, Counselor Broadhead's question around what are we really outsourcing? And I'm, I go back to the exact summary um, where kind of started first principles, said there was fifteen thousand calls roughly to nine-one-one annually. Then it goes on to say approximately sixty percent of those calls are retained within the RCMP. Thirty percent are transferred to Alberta Health Services for ambulance dispatch, and then it says three percent are transferred to fire services. But if I look at the four thousand number roughly, um, that it doesn't drive. That's a significantly higher number than three percent. So uh, the the, even the most basic math is maybe not clear to me, and if somebody either, it's it, it's in the M and P report, um, exact summary, so maybe M and P could clarify that just as a starting point, or or administration who's reviewed the report?
I think I may be able to take a stab at that one, Counselor Kilic. So the three percent, I believe those numbers, um, if I recall correctly, I don't have them right in front of me right now, but if I recall correctly, looking at the three percent was based on the total nine-one-one calls that get transferred from Maloney Place over to um, Fire Hall Three, Fire Dispatch. But that three percent also included the test calls that happen. So every day, there is two test calls that happen at shift change with the fire department in Maloney Place, where where those numbers are are included in that three percent, and I believe um, that's maybe where that initial number came from. And there might be a slight discrepancy in those numbers based on some of the test calls versus the actual, but I see Chad unmuted. He might be able to add some more clarity.
Yeah, the the numbers are related to the the primary path. So all the calls are coming into the primary PSAP to nine-one-one. Once nine-one-one gets their answer from where that call needs to go, that kind of pie chart that you're describing is that preliminary path. So sixty percent of them to the RCMP, um, the thirty-odd percent to Alberta Health, the three percent to fire. We actually took the test calls out, Aaron. If you remember, we had had them in there, and then I think it was uh, Vern had uh, let us know about that, that we had kind of missed those. We took them out. The four thousand calls are the volume that goes from AHS back to Fire Dispatch after that primary path. So um, that that description of of the that tree, as it were, is that primary path. The four thousand are then coming back from AHS back to fire after the, after that.
So that would be the the trans uh, nearly a thousand calls are transferred back from AHS to fire? Is that?
I believe it's the four thousand just to fire, but I I don't, I don't recall exactly.
Because there, there's four hundred or five hundred that, or maybe a thousand, if I look at the total, they they go direct to fire. And and would it be a thousand that get redirected back from AHS to to fire? Just trying to again, understand the numbers of what we're really talking about in terms of potential outsourcing and making it clear to our residents what we're actually doing here.
Also, Counselor Kilic, um, are you able to refer to exactly what page on the report, uh, those numbers are, which ones you're looking at, and then um, I can take a closer look at that? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the the same graph and the same numbers that you are before we am able to to try to help out with this one.
Well, it would be in option three B. Clarification chart was where where the four thousand number comes from, but in the executive report right at the beginning, it says the sixty thirty three and and three percent of fifteen thousand total is not four thousand.
Yeah, the ones, I think, it's it's uh, the the data is in the Fire Dispatch Performance Review, Aaron. So the Medical First Response and EMS Medical Assist Calls are in twenty twenty, they were twelve hundred, but they were, they were more in previous years, twenty-two hundred-ish, give or take in previous years. So those would have went PSAP to AHS, back to Fire Dispatch.
Okay. Um, the, just a question in terms of handoff to AHS, because this is really where I think a lot of our concerns come in around handoff to a uh, third party potentially. Is there a delay? Do we know what kind of the statistics are when we transfer a call uh, over to AHS? Like, is that is there a big issue there, no issue? Is that, that's really what we're trying to talk about here is is, I'm looking to see if that gives us an indicator of what challenges we could have if we had a handoff to an external third party for for fire calls. Do, what do, what do we, what's our experience with transfer to AHS?
Uh, Counselor Kilic, I can, I can try to answer that one. I I don't have any um, specific objective measures or statistics on the exact amount of time it's it's taking for AHS to to answer uh, the transfer. Uh, an- anecdotally, I do know that 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 there there are occasions where there is, there is delays uh, no doubt, um, because of the call volumes that go through that dispatch center. Um, I I uh, would be able to, maybe during other counselor questions that may come in, in the meantime, I may be able to to try to find some of those statistics to give you a a number um, kind of on the fly here as to what their um, current call answer time is over at AHS. There is some statistics that might be available that I might be able to grab.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about the call answer. I I know there's huge problem, I shouldn't say huge problems, but there's certainly problems with dispatching ambulances, but that's different than answering calls, and I'd like to focus um, on on the answering calls piece, but um, and and just a question, if I could then go back to M and P is, when we applied the weighting, my my understanding of the weighting model is simply so that we apply the same factors and percentages to different scenarios, so that we're scoring and weighting different options using the same criteria. It's it's not that they are um, the thirty-five percent for impact or thirty-five percent to cost. That's not a an absolute science, but it's a way to make sure that we're applying the same scoring and criteria to the five, six, seven different scenarios. I think there were seven scenarios that we were looked, looked at. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's two layers to the way we scored it. One was we gave it a a score across each of those uh, criteria, and those criteria were were listed in the RFP, not not listed in the RFP to create a a scoring grid per se, but you know, certainly they were there, so we didn't, you know, those were obviously the pertinent things at least. Um, you know, at the time, the the RFP was written. Uh, so there's two layers to it. We we scored each scenario against each other regardless of weighting. Um, and and gave it a score. So some of those were mathematically easier than others, you know, cost. Um, because we tried to keep the scales linear, so if we had a scale of of one to ten, you know, something that rates a four. So if we had a scale of of one to ten, you know, something that rates a four uh on cost should be twice as expensive as something that rates an eight. So that was fairly easy to do. But then we took the the scores in each one of those categories and said, you know, across those criteria, people, cost, uh service, et cetera. We certainly heard that those didn't have equal weight. So we then wanted to try and reflect what we had heard in those discussions across. So we've got kind of scores for each category across the same criteria. Then we gave them different weighted averages as well to try and capture what we were hearing in those conversations to best represent those scores so that you weren't comparing something as an eight that we heard was probably less of an important factor than something else that was an eight that was a very important factor.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yeah, I think that sliding bar chart was listed in our exact report. So the the details are there. Thank you.
That all I had, Counselor Kilic? All right, Counselor Jolly.
Um, I think Mr. Grease Geesberg has a a comment on on that last question.
Thank you. Yes, I was just gonna um respond. I in it while uh Mr. Lins was responding to that question from Counselor Kilic, I was able to look up um some statistics. I didn't get the exact information I was looking for, but uh in a twenty twenty report, Alberta Health Services did report publicly that they were answering their calls uh within ten seconds ninety five percent of the time. Now, I don't have objective confirmation of that through some other statistics, but that's what they were publicly reporting um in in twenty twenty. To to get more up to date information, we might have to go through a little bit of a process to find that if if that's um important to council's decision right now.
And thank you for that clarification.
Counsel Jolly?
Thank you. Um, so my first question is just as a follow up to Counselor Hughes's comments or questions about um so some of the dispatches answering calls with recordings. Um, so if we outsource, would it be our intent to ensure that through that RFP process that we require that a a human answers the phone?
Uh, through the chair to to Counselor Jolly, uh, that that is the intent, yes. Um, uh, Aaron Geesberg pointed out, there is process that uh should stack calls be occurred uh or realized by dispatch center and they're not answered within a certain period of time or rings. They would then be red dispatched or sent to another uh answering point uh to be answered. So obviously, anyone's hope is that uh we wouldn't end up with a recording or uh a delay in being answered wouldn't be any greater than ten seconds before you're reset to another, again, uh dispatch center to be answered by another nine one one dispatcher.
Okay, I'm glad that we can put that in the RFP. Um, my second question is is so if if we decide to move more toward amalgamation of of police and fire dispatch, um, is there someone available to explain the timeline of uh building a a capital project proposal and then actually building something that could accommodate those those two services um wi- with that twenty twenty five deadline in mind?
Uh, through the charity Counselor Jolly, um, we would have to get to work on that fairly quickly. But uh please uh understand that we would likely be coming back to council uh for some financial support to bring a uh a consultant in to have a good detailed look at exactly what those costs would be uh in order to amalgamate the two centers. Uh, we we know we have space needs and concerns. Likely there will be potentially some savings with uh with the amalgamation of the two centers. I I honestly don't know exactly what those numbers are today. Uh, but then we also have some staffing considerations that we would have to uh come to a realization on as well. Uh, again, as mentioned, we would have to get to work on that very quickly. Uh, also too, just as a final point, we have a renovation plan for Maloney Place. Uh, the exterior work, the parking lot work is happening this fall with uh work to the building taking place. I believe it's to begin in the spring of next year. Uh, time would be of the essence and uh that renovation may be impacted uh to accommodate any sort of amalgamation. Should that be the direction uh given by council?
Okay, and so so you think that a capital project could be could meet those deadlines?
Uh, true, uh through through uh through the Chair to Council Jolly, uh honestly, it's it's quite hard to say. We would again have work on it and we'd be looking for some support from council financially uh to to put a point person on as a consultant uh to do much of that like workforce.
Okay, and can you just kind of related just in terms of kind of capital project timelines? Can you remind me how uh much the Fire Hall One opening was was delayed from kind of our original intent?
I believe the delay, our our initial uh occupancy date was set. I I want to say it was September or October of twenty twenty one. Uh, there there was multiple delays and of course, as you know, uh, we moved in or with our official grand opening uh in early June.
Okay, thank you. So my last question is, um, so i- is there an opportunity to first um outsource while we kind of you you know, if if we were to decide to go that direction, um while we create conditions to um dispatch locally for fire and and police? So you know, what what are the lengths of those contracts usually to to outsource? And is that possible to outsource for, I don't know, four years? Kind of while we decide whether um it's viable to do it in house and and use that as as a you know, revenue stream, if you will, and 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 provide the service for other communities as well?
Uh, through the charity Council Jolly, um it's likely that a a contract could be found with a service provider in a timely fashion. However, I I would have to caution that that may not be the service provider that we would desire, meaning somebody who would meet the uh uh the criteria that City St. Albert would require as a minimum uh to take on our services. Further to that, uh, I wouldn't see why we couldn't have a sunset clause or a short term contract in place. Uh, if we did decide to contract out why we why we worked through uh a motivation option as an example or another option, should that be chosen? Um, again, it it comes down to time, uh, costs almost may be impacted if we do decide or agree to a short term contract with a service provider. It would be an assumption that we may see an increased cost due to the short relationship that we may have with that provider versus a long term.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to focus again on on the the idea that this is a secondary uh sort of response, not the primary public access point. So it goes to the met uh the medical first response EMS assist goes to AHS. It comes back to us, right? So so my question is is that uh we make that determination on what sort of calls come back to us? Is that correct? So it's not AHS defining what comes back to us? We make that determination what comes back to us?
Through to Chair to Council Broadhead, that is correct. We choose the determinants for which our fire crews or fire engines are dispatched uh to in an M F R scenario to support the services provided by Alberta Health Services.
Okay, fair enough. So if that is contracted out, we still have that opportunity to define what calls come back to us. Is that correct?
That would be that would be correct, yes. That uh those determinants would still be the responsibility or still be our decision uh to make.
So basically, what we're talking about is who's the middle man here, sending back the the call to send out the ambulance or or the 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 fire truck to the scene? That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about process or anything. It's just that person who takes the call from AHS and dispatches a particular unit to a location. Is that correct?
Uh, through the through the Chair to Council Broadhead, that is correct.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Um, call to uh a question to uh Mr. Geesberg. If you don't mind, you you suggested that St. Albert was the all and one other community were the only ones that had primary uh nine one one answering services at the local RCMP within the province?
That is correct, us and the city of Lloydminster.
St. Albert Lloydminster.
That's correct.
That's interesting. Is the rest of the province not served by nine one one calls or like who's answering the other?
So so for clarity, we yeah, so for for clarity, we are the only one, us in the city of Lloydminster are the only RCMP detachments that have their primary nine one one service within the detachment. Other primary nine one one service, other communities are being served by nine one one, um Sturgeon County from Parkland. Uh, Sherwood Park has uh their nine one one service. Um, their primary nine one one service is out of the fire department, not out of the uh police uh RCMP detachment. So they're all served by a nine one one center. It's just that in St. Albert and Lloydminster, uh, it is located within the detachments.
Guess what I'm going to is is that the idea of having non-local dispatch is not a new situation within the province of Alberta. And nine one one is getting answered, is that would would you say that?
Uh, correct, nine one one is getting answered across the province of Alberta. There's always there's a a center for every municipality and jurisdiction.
Fair enough, and we're not even talking nine one one answering here. We're talking about the secondary process. And for that, if we choose to go a certain direction, the city of St. Albert reaps a financial benefit as a result. That's what's that question here. Is that correct? It's okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hughes?
Okay, I got one more question. I'm gonna I'm looking to you, Mr. Lins, because this is the report from May seventh again. The report that just won't die. So the question I have is when you might go back to, actually, I'm on the wrong page here. I got so many screens open here. Okay, here we go. Um, when I go back to that, the the modeling chart comparison, what page is that on? You're page seven, I think. Um, the one I was referring to, the weighted scores. So you weighted the score of customer impact as higher than the amalgamation. And I'm trying to figure out, that's it's always just been a head scratcher for me as to why? Because the biggest risk that's been going on today has been with the assumption or the concern that the customer impact may not be the same because the people who are doing it may not be local and may not know the area. And yet you rated it as a higher score. So what was your thought process behind that?
Yeah, so it was a it was a conversation that was about service disruption. And when we had talked about a bunch of the unknowns, including some of the human capital elements, the building, some of the I T elements, um, we we were a little bit concerned that there may be a period there of trying to get it all figured out. And we did, um, I think, you know, knock it down a peg because of that. That was the discussion that we had had.
So that so you're talking about the amalgamation was a seven point zero because of those concerns?
That's correct, yeah. So and to your point, though, that would likely be something within not a defined timeframe, but it would probably be temporal. It wouldn't be, you know, but but that was the discussion we had had at the time is is did that give us concerns about how smooth the operation would be? And then as a result, how would that or how could that affect customer impact?
Okay, so really it was just about how the amalgamation could occur. But once it was in place, so this was just about the transition period, that's what it rated it lower, not about the actual operates altogether.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I see no more questions. I'm just gonna ask, maybe it's been answered, I just don't remember timelines more than anything. Because I feel like we're being asked to make a very, very major decision that is, I wouldn't say controversial, but I think council feels they don't have their complete, the complete facts, so timelines. Because there's lots of questions about amalgamation and um but it scores differently because of the unknowns. So how fast do we have to make this decision before we actually have to buy the next gen system? Or could we hold off till we get those amalgamation questions, probably a capital charter from Maloney? And and then we can make a decision based on all the facts.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm actually going to ask Joanne if she can um provide a bit of insight on how quickly we have to move on the NG nine one one uh product. I believe we have some deadlines coming up, but she's uh she'll be able to provide.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Um, so to the chair. So we all know that the uh final date for the current nine one one system to be available is March fourth, twenty twenty five. We need to be in a position with our technology in order and functioning up to six months prior to that. So that puts us into an into an October twenty twenty four situation. When we talk about the NG nine one one technology, there are multiple components to it. So as I've mentioned in response to Counselor Mackay's question, the CAD system is one that we do need to work on a procurement regardless of what our option is. So we would definitely start that procurement process. In terms of the actual time to have the rest of the equipment implemented, we do have a very short timeline. And if we chose to want to pursue the amalgamation option, what I would need to do is work more closely with um the partners in Alberta as part of the um uh and the NG nine one one network to determine just which pieces we would be at risk of not completing by that timeframe. Unfortunately, I don't have the specifics right now, but I certainly can tell you probably what you already know is that things would be very tight in terms of timelines. But I would take a modular approach to it to make progress on those items that we can as we are working out the details about amalgamation. So afraid I'm I can't be more specific than that at the coast, it may be very tight.
So you're gonna start the CAD system right away, no matter what?
Correct. And if if we were in a situation, um, the we, as I mentioned earlier too, we have the option of hosting technology in the cloud. We have the option of implementing technology on premise. Typically speaking, it can be faster to do it in the cloud. So one of the strategies that we would take if we needed to would be to look at the hosted option because of the time savings we may get from it. Um, and also knowing that perhaps we may have it for a shorter period of time. So we will we'll have, we would have to take the approach of considering some contingencies on the technology side should we have to have it in place um with within our current structure if amalgamation cannot be completed in time.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I think uh, you know, the the direction of council is to go back and study this. We could come back in the fall um with a less than mature estimate, but but certainly an estimate that would allow us to have an idea of scope and scale in terms of time, infrastructure and and potentially resource costs that should allow us to meet uh the NG nine eleven benchmarks has already been articulated. Um, but uh it's going to take us a couple of months to do that initial estimate.
I I totally respect that, yeah.
Yeah, further to uh Mr. Fletcher, um, your worship, is one of the issues um that Joanne was kind of talking about as well is that we'd have to see what the RCMP would allow. Would they allow to go into the cloud? Maybe, maybe not. Same thing with AHS. And so there, how they roll out their technology is going to infect how we roll out our technology, and that can be an unknown as well.
Yeah, and I guess that's my that's feeds right to my point, too many unknowns. So um and we would continue status quo between now and the fall.
Absolutely, your worship. Status quo would be maintained through to a decision on the way ahead and actually uh the implementation of it.
I see no more questions.
I just told that point, Madam.
Counselor Mackay, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize, Madam. Could you could you create a hybrid process while you're doing that? Or I mean, in a sense, or can you start some preliminary work in relation to exploring uh an outside contractor? At the same time, you're doing the same work, so you're not going back to ground zero and starting over? Can you can you can it can be two processes simultaneously?
Uh, capacity, certainly a bit of an issue, but yes, absolutely, Counselor. We could certainly, we can sculpt the lay of the land in terms of the contracting piece while we look at the potential for amalgamation, yes.
Yeah, I'm I guess my only concern, Madam Mayor, would be is capacity um of staff. But at the same time, then we're not losing time if no matter what the decision is, whether the majority of council supports one or the other, at least we have the information is what I've been.
Counselor Brumansky, question?
Yes, a question uh related to this, you know, if we're going on another tangent right now, like we're kind of delaying what we're talking about here. In an amalgamation, could it be guaranteed that an amalgamation to the RCMP building would be a better choice in fact than the the nine one one going to the fire? Because you don't know where the police department's going to sit in the future either at this point in time. So if you get data on that information, then the provincial police changes, for example, you're back to square one. And if you're outsourcing, you know, for the for a company to do this in the meantime, and you said you needed a year to And if you're outsourcing, you know, for the, for a company to do this in the meantime, and you said you needed a year or two to even do that. I don't see that making sense. So I'm very confused on the direction right now.
Well, there is no direction right now, actually, honestly, so just, we're just kind of seeing our options.
Right.
Yeah, so the hybrid was just something that Ken was, sorry, Counselor Mackay was pondering. If I have a, if I get a motion on the floor right now, we can debate it today. Um, if I see nothing, then we can we could probably craft a motion to ask for more, um, more additional information on the amalgamation option, yeah.
Sorry, excuse me.
Go, go ahead, yeah.
There's a motion to keep it status quo now, any research can be done at any time, right?
Well, as we, as we heard, there's a short window. Because we're gonna, if, if status quo remains, we're gonna have to invest in the NG nine one one eventually.
But then we have to spend money to save money.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
We have to spend money to meet the regulatory requirements.
Yes.
That's driven, and that's the issue for the NG one, nine one.
Very counsel, I see no one's hands up to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
You're gonna make the motion, the one that's in front of us?
No.
Okay, let's hear what you want to do.
The alternative.
Oh, the alternative? Sorry, what page you have? Okay, page uh twenty-three of sixty-six in today's agenda package gives an alternative. Go ahead.
Uh, the council direct administration to proceed with maintaining dispatch services within the city of St. Albert as status quo.
Okay. Any, um, I'm gonna say any questions on the motion, but I think we've exhausted questions. I'll accept the motion, Counselor Brumansky. Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Counsel Jolly, use your hands up. No, is that, is that from before? Okay.
For debate, whenever that's happening.
Debate, okay, go ahead, Counsel Brumansky.
Okay, so uh the reason I'm putting this forward right at this point in time is because the variables that we have here. We have so many ifs, so many estimates, so many subjectives, guesses, no specific data. Um, help desk, you know, there's no direct timing on the pickup time for that. Technology's not clear yet. Um, we don't, at this point in time, changing anything, we're fixing something that's not broken. We don't know the direction that the police department is going, and we don't want to be discussing spending money at this time when we were just talking about saving money by going to another avenue. So I don't see the purpose in this right now. Um, maybe once, um, you know, further data is brought up, more clear data, I guess. You know, some actual numbers and some actual savings, because I don't see that we have any of that clear right now. And, um, you know, I'm very proud of our fire department. Um, you know, I hear the sirens going all hours of the night. I don't like being woke up by them, but I'm happy they're there doing the quick response. And, and I think it's, right now, it's up in the air as to how quick our response would be, and um I'd like to just stay with the status quo and hope the council will support me in that at, um, this point in time.
Counsel Mackay, have a question.
I haven't, no, I wanna make, I, I would like, I like to make an amendment. I doubt it'll be friendly, but based on the last little information that Counsel Brumansky put forward was part of their reasoning, I believe, in her opening comments was around the lack of data. But there's no direction other than if we leave it at status quo, um, my take of that is, is that's it. No more direction, they move forward in status quo, and uh we don't uh get the benefit of any additional information that's possibly available uh or timelines. So I think that, um.
So they make it an amending motion?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm making a amending motion.
Make the motion, and then we'll get into.
Well, I guess I'm, the, the challenge I have, Madam Mayor, is, is that I, I'm just saying, we have to say that council direct administration to proceed with uh maintaining dispatch services within the city of St. Albert. Um, pending additional information on other opportunities such as uh amalgamation. But then again, I might need help crafting that information. So I wanna, like, because I need a timeline as well.
So you wanna keep the motion that Counsel Brumansky has put forward, but then put behind it, asking for further information essentially?
Requesting, yeah, requesting administration be directed to come back with uh for additional information.
On the amalgamation.
On the amalgamation option. By a timeframe, and um Mr. Fletcher said uh by the fall, but would that be quarter three? Or is that too early?
How are you doing, Cheryl? Can you catch me now? Let's go. Counsel Hughes, Counsel Jolly, we're just letting, uh, ledge huddle.
Mayor, well, let us, huh, huh, link, can I just ask a question?
Questions are fine, yep.
So, um, I guess to Counselor Mackay, um, I understand the intent of your motion. Um, if that's the case, could we also add a dollar figure? So, um, I know staff talked earlier about they would need um funding to research further, kind of the, the details of uh costs for amalgamation. So is the intent to say that, you know, a hundred thousand dollars from a reserve of some sort be used?
Uh, good, good question, uh, Counsel Jolly. I'm gonna have to look to administration to see if there's additional costs expected in that uh did, uh, pending motion.
Um, thank you, um, your worship and the Counselor Mackay. I'd probably suggest that we do, um, that we take up to one hundred thousand dollars. Um, we may not need that, um, based on our initial reviews. However, we get into anything that, that, that deals with the RCMP building and any structural uh changes to that process, then that would add on considerable dollars.
But we're just talking about gathering the information, not, not the capital project.
But I think, you know, like, as part of our whole process, though, we're going to move, that would have to be part of our budget deliberations this fall. Is on the RCMP, so we have to move on that as well, too.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, quickly.
But the gathering of the information, that's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars?
No, I think that if we, if we add in, so what I'm just saying, if we have to go into this RCMP building, part of it, that's going to add in considerable money. So that's why I'm just saying up to a hundred thousand to do, to do both. The gathering of the information, and if we have to do some um needs assessment around the RCMP building and conceptual. That's all part, because we have to bring that back this fall to budget if we are moving to amalgamation.
Okay, thank you. Question? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. Just as a process question, is Counselor Mackay uh proposing a friendly amendment to Counselor Brumansky's motion?
When, when I see it.
Or?
When I see it, I will turn to Counsel Brumansky and ask her if it's friendly or not. If not, we will debate it separately.
So that, okay, so that she could accept it if it's agreeable rather than having a total separate motion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're still crafting those, because we.
Yeah, it's on the screen. Just trying to understand process.
So it says the main motion be amended by adding the following language at the end. And that administration be further instructed to return to council with additional information on the amalgamation options by Q three two thousand and twenty-two. And, and be, we need to put a dollar figure in there and give it up, up to a hundred thousand dollars to complete this work, yeah. Sure.
Not to exceed a hundred thousand for that, those on the conference call. Uh, Counsel Brumansky has a question. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
I'm just waiting to actually have the motion here.
So if, if I may, Mayor, is the idea that everything that's on the screen is being proposed as a friendly amendment with the addition of the concept that no more than X amount of money be spent on obtaining the additional information?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay.
Correct, and we're not sure if it's friendly yet.
Sorry.
We're not sure if it's friendly yet. I have an ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's an amending motion.
What, what I didn't hear was any specification as to what's the source of that additional money.
Stabilization.
Stabilization, okay, thank you.
All right, Counsel Brumansky, so you kind of get the gist of what he's proposing. Is, is this friendly, or would you like to debate it?
I just have one question before I answer that. If that hundred thousand dollars would be dedicated to a consultant or in-house?
I would, I think we already heard capacity issues, and we already have a consultant that's probably quite familiar with the work, so I'm, I'm not sure, but.
It would be spent on third parties.
Third party, okay.
So a new consulting company or the same new?
We'd have to be looking at, uh, at the project, but uh we may be able to do an extension with MMP. It could go to another third-party consultant depending on the work that's involved.
I'll, I'll accept it as friendly and.
Friendly, okay. There you go, Counsel Mackay.
All right, um.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment.
Yep.
I'm just going back to process. So Counsel Brumansky, you've done your opening arguments. And, and you're okay with what's added, so I don't, I, and I'll let you come back to you to close, so you'll, you'll have another chance. So now I'm opening it up for debate, and I think Counsel Jolly had her hand up for debate. Do, Counsel Jolly?
Uh, I, I mean, I can enter into debate briefly, um. You know, I, I think, we know what the results are going to be of this um study. Um, we know what it costs to um renovate or build a facility that, that would accommodate this kind of use. Um, and, and I suspect that, that we understand that that can't be done. Within the timelines that are required of us by the provincial government. I'm not opposed to exploring this option, but I would, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote against this motion because um our staff need direction at this point. Um, so that we can move ahead with, even if it's a temporary option, um, that, that will meet the requirements uh that, that the province has set out. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was going back and forth with the wording I never did catch. Is this a friendly or is this?
It's friendly, yes.
Thank you.
I got you covered, Mr. LaPla. Counsel Mackay?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Counsel Brumansky, for at least, for putting it on the floor and accepting the friendly. And I think that there's so much information that we asked clearly by the questions that we asked this afternoon around um this entire process and, and even some of the waiting questions that uh I asked and other counselors asked were a, were a snapshot in time in relation to where they would score, and maybe they will score differently now. But there's, there was a, a lot of unknowns uh in relation to amalgamation, and we, uh, we didn't have those costs. And, and I realize that the entire MMP um uh look into this situation or information was, was certainly uh accomplished. I mean, that they were looking for an opportunity to dispo, uh, to explore the different operating models, but I don't believe that we got complete information. And until we actually receive in the complete information, I don't think we can make it uh full and complete decision. I mean, for example, um, when I was making some uh of my questions, there's an opportunity. I see it as an opportunity that we are one of the only um PSAPs that are run by the RCMP. And that we have actually an opportunity to maybe take advantage of that and leverage some of that. And actually open uh up and expand it to other municipalities who are uh operating uh police as secondary and the capacity issues that are currently going on within the um I was gonna say the Northern Alberta Operational Communication Center. It's hard getting out of these acronyms. It's easier to say and not, but anyways, so I think that there's opportunities there that we uh can't, haven't had a chance to explore yet. And so for us to um either choose to go status quo or for us to actually look at uh contracting out, um, I think that there's perhaps a better opportunity of amalgamation with uh our primary PSAP and, and maybe that's, maybe that has some hard costs, and maybe that makes it prohibitive. But we won't know until uh we actually get better costs. And it's always better to get them before than actually try to get it, well, before the proverbial horse is outside of the barn. Because once we let this go, we're not gonna get it back. If we let this go now, we're not gonna get it back. And not without significant extra costs that I just foresee. So, I mean, to say that we could start to, to come up with some sort of a um, I guess, uh, uh, a short-term um outsourcing contract. I think if we do that, then we end up in a situation where we don't get what we really want, or if we do, it gets very expensive and it becomes prohibitive in its own. So I, I appreciate it again, um, council's consideration for the friendly, but I think we have an opportunity to get additional information that'll really actually give us the best decision possible.
Counsel Bredh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quite honestly, I think we're making this decision significantly more complex than it needs to be. What's before us is whether or not we're willing to contract out a service which is currently done in-house by a small number of, of employees to an outside agency, which uh will provide the same service, only saving us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, which is direct off of the tax line of the citizens of St. Albert. And quite honestly, I believe that's exactly what our citizens ask us to do, is to take a look at the business that we are currently providing and see if we can't find a new and innovative way to provide the very same service, only with reduced cost. And that's exactly what we're offering here, is the same service, except three hundred and fifty thousand dollars cheaper. Now, for sure, there's an impact to the local uh group of employees. But my understanding is, is that they will be looked after. It's not as if the people will be without a employment at the end of the day. By the time this is all in place, uh, new positions will be available for them. So it's, it's not even as if we're uh cutting some people loose. But what we are asking is for the citizens of St. Albert to accept a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual ongoing savings with a, with a different method of secondary uh dispatch to our fire services. This is not primary PSAP. This is not nine one one answering. This is the the secondary one, which is second on down the line. And this is a service that is provided in many communities around the province uh without any difficulty. And uh, and it's, it's interesting that uh if we, if we start to explore amalgamation and oh, let's take a look at perhaps providing uh contracted services to other municipalities for primary uh PSAP, because we can do that and uh, because we have our local uh RCMP currently doing that. We'd be asking he, other municipalities to do exactly what we're not wanting to do ourselves. And, and quite honestly, it's, to me, it's a very simple question. At the end of the day, this is what we're asking. This is the savings, here are the impacts, and you make a decision. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Bredh. Counsel Hughes?
Um, thank you, um. Counsel Bredh, you always speak so eloquently. Um, I am gonna disagree with you today, though, because it, the biggest thing for me was the medical, we um bounced back for the medical for the twelve, twenty-two hundred people that got a bounce back on average per year. That's huge. And some of the challenges, first, this is like personal experience, but when my husband first, this is like personal experience, but when my husband um, literally took his um when, when he severed the tendon to between his kneecap and his thigh and we were in the middle of nowhere at the time and we had to make the phone call. And ultimately, fire services had to rescue him because there was no way for us to get through a regular ambulance. And so you have to state to them where you are. And if it's not a street address, it's like, how are they going to find you? So the challenge comes in where you say something like, I'm over by the Red Willow Trail on this spot where I'm behind Elmer Gish School and you don't have an address just readily available. And yet these people are supposed to somehow figure out where to go. So it's not just about the fire, which also sometimes fires don't happen in street addresses. But it's also just about the medical issues that we've now done because we are amalgamating fire and ambulance. We pay a premium to have that done. But as a result, that also means they're responding to fire responses, uh, to medical responses. And I don't personally want to have it on me to say that I'm willing to say, okay, it's three hundred and forty thousand, absolutely. And I, if there's anybody who has ever wanted to keep the dollars down in taxes, I would say I'm there. But three hundred and forty thousand in the big scheme of things is eleven dollars a year on people's average taxes or less than a dollar a month. And if it was one of your children or somebody you knew and they didn't get the medical response in time because they were in obscure location and people were not familiar with where that location was because it went to an amp, it went dispatched fire. Um, I don't know if they'd say it was worth the ninety-four cents a month savings. So that's where I'm thinking, let's find out what the confer- some conversation is for the amalgamation. Just to see what it is. I realize, and I agree with you, Natalie, uh, Council Jolly, I agree that there's there's costs involved here that we may not even be able to meet these timelines. But there's also, we have other buildings that we could repurpose um, that we, you know, that when we bought over by Campbell Park, there could be other things where we re- reallocate um, resources to make it happen without having to buy or renovate massively to accomplish the goal. So if we go into that kind of a mindset of what, how can we do it as opposed to this is all the reasons why we can't, it may be possible. There may be savings, there may not be. I am concerned about the waiting schedule where it said it was six point five, but that was in the merger process, not the after process. That's like saying you shouldn't build, buy, build a house because it's really messy at the beginning, but not discussing that you'll live in it for twenty-five years later. So I think that there's potential. Um, but I'm, I'm personally not willing to sacrifice eleven dollars a year on the potential safety of our residents and so there has to be a line of the sand and that's where mine is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Um, my thoughts are that th- this uh, and and the answers that I received in terms of call handling both the volume of calls uh, that would would be potentially outsourced. Uh, low volume um, that we are already outsourcing, if you will, uh, or handing off the similar calls or much larger number of calls to Alberta Health Services. Uh, and the handoff isn't a problem. Yes, there's problems with the final dispatch, but that's a, a separate issue. Um, so small number of calls. Uh, handoff can work. Uh, it, it works in many other jurisdictions around or or the majority of jurisdictions around the province. So I, I, I think we, we have a, the opportunity in our contract negotiations to specify how our calls would be treated and how the services would be delivered for the residents. Uh, that could protect them and provide that same level of excellent service. The savings, um, the cost savings, certainly an opportunity both on operating and capital for the next gen service. I believe the next gen nine-one-one will give much better location services as any, you know, the whole, that's a whole reason why it's coming in. And for me that, to uh, consider this particular motion as it is, uh, I would much prefer to go back to the original one and and provide guidance to council or from council to administration to continue uh, looking at uh, at, at outsourcing. Um, I think I would agree with Council Broadhead that we're, we've, we've made this overly complex. And we're, we're missing out the opportunity and the time that uh, and additional staff resources, additional um, dollar resources, whether it's to consultants or whatever. We're, we're missing out on, on the timing. Um, those questions will still be there. Uh, even it, it, we, we don't know what uh, the state of the RCMP is going to be in, in, in a year or two. So um, to, to delay the decision and and look at uh, the motion that's on the floor, I, I wouldn't be supportive of that.
All right. I was walking in here today thinking somebody's going to have to tell me what to do because I was so confused on this one and I still am very, very torn. Uh, I, I listened to Council Broadhead. I'm like, oh, I'm going to vote against this. I listen to Council Hughes. I'm going to vote in favor of it. That's what it means when you come in here with an open mind, but you know, I think, I think what I'm, I think all seven of us need to, to take a step back and and go back in times, you know, and and Council Bermansky, Council Kilik, you weren't here, but we did ask our administration to, to do the Ernst &amp; Young Report. The corporate review and we have a report on it later. To look for cost savings. It's maybe unfortunate that the first big controversial touchy one that they brought back is related to um, dispatch and and the health and safety of our community. But if we continue to turn down some of these, these options for cost savings for our community, that million dollars is, was a waste of money. This takes leadership and it's going, it's not easy. I, I, I agree with you, Council Kilik, and that the nine-one-one, the next gen is, is pro- might even locate your, you better than in local knowledge sometimes, especially if you've got a panicked situation and somebody's just really, um, I do worry. Everett, about the space that our current dispatch is into, because as we go to a hundred thousand, they're going to need more space. I hope all of you had a chance to visit the dispatch. It's, it's a really interesting place to go. And but for that one call, that, you know, that you need that local knowledge or you need that. I worried what the options are. I guess that's what I'm seeing is, but when I hear that a nine-one-one call comes in and it's answered by an automatic thing and you get put on hold, that's not what I want for my residents. So that's the option in front of us. I don't want that. So and I also believe too, what Council Jolly said, that the addition that has been added to this um, motion, I think we all know what's going to happen. It's just going to be, it's going to be very expensive to expand Maloney. Or to find another space and and bring it up to RCMP standards for security and take and and combining two unions is going to be difficult and having all the fire dispatchers have their security checks, anything to sit with the RCMP. It's very complicated and it's probably much more expensive than status quo. So our options are save three hundred and forty thousand status quo or maybe spend more money, but maybe get an even far superior service. So I'll let Council Bermansky close. Just leave it at that.
Thank you for that. I guess it's up to me. So I'm the councillor that's digging in the weeds for dollars. So if I could save three hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's where, you know, that's where I would go. But it, I haven't been convinced of that. There's been no proof here. Um, the documentation that we got, the consultants, we don't even have the business that would be handling it. So I don't see the dollar savings. It hasn't been proved to me. What I do see is proof that our system works and the fire department gets there when I need them. They get to the seniors home on the co- you know, in my neighborhood when they need them. They're always there. They're always responding. They're, they were helping Sturgeon most recently, like, I mean, they're they do a great job. So I know that they're going to get there in the system that we have. I'm not convinced they would get there in the new system. Um, technology, it will come. And I mean, maybe things will change when the new technology is here. Maybe it'll get better, maybe it'll get worse. I've seen technology go the wrong way too. So that's again, not proof to me. Um, we don't know the results. I know it was mentioned, you know, by other councillors that will know the result. We know how this is going to come out for results. We really don't know because things change day to day, new ideas come up. I took it as a friendly amendment because, you know, I want the best for the citizens, the best information they can possibly have. Uh, we're one of only two, um, you know, call centers in the RCMP. So maybe that has to change. You know, maybe that's not where it's going to go. Um, and again, that's why I might see ro- results that more should be dedicated to fire in the future. Um, I just want the proof of, of savings, proof of value to the citizens. But my number one, number one thing is the safety. Safety of the people in the city, safety of my family, safety that, you know, the park's not going to burn down before a fire department can get there. And um, and I feel confident that we have that now. And again, um, prove me wrong in your results. And um, then I'll be happy to agree, but I haven't, um, I haven't been convinced that a call center and when I hear you know, we can call the cloud, heard that about three times today. That throws me off a little bit too. I don't want to be calling the uh, cloud and I don't want to be on a, you know, on a call desk that I hang up on out of frustration. So I'm begging council to support me in this. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm here to to get all the details. I'm, I'm a detailed person. I want every last detail, but today we don't have that. We don't have that to go to an outsource. And um, again, time will tell. It's my close.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Council Bermansky, sorry. Council Bermansky, Council Hughes and Council Mackay in favor. So what do I have a question motion? There we go. So you have no direction?
Ma- Mayor, I, I'm happy to make the original motion if.
Sir Jolly, so you're talking about today's orig- the recommended motion from administration?
Yeah, although I like Wes's voice, I'm happy to have him read it instead.
Go, go ahead, either one of you. Council Jolly.
Okay, it'll take me a little bit just to look that up unless Cheryl can pop it in the chat.
It's on page twenty of sixty-six.
Okay, that council direct administration should proceed with implementation of the recommendation three B contract secondary P S app and fire dispatch to an external service provider. Primary P S app services and police dispatch would remain in the St. Albert Police Communication Center as outlined in the MMP Emergency Communication nine-one-one dispatch delivery model review final report attached to agenda dated May sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
All right. Before I accept that motion, I'm actually just look at our staffer, Mr. Fletcher and and Everett and Mr. Hiltz. There's been a lot of conversations about our fears about what might happen, so how do we, how do we let you know our desires for the RFP? For example, no automated calls. That kind of stuff, or is that just a given that because you've heard it or?
I think your worship. It, it'll be, you know, I think that we'd, we'd be looking at kind of mirroring a lot of the services through the R- ours, the current services through the RCMP. But we also can, can, we, you know, we can also do a, um, a survey with council as well and get some additional input into it before the R- the RFP goes live. Um, you know, we can kind of look at that as a partnership moving forward.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, Council Jolly, accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll echo Council Broadhead's comments that um, I think we've made this more complicated than it needs to be. Every single person um, on council and in, in our administration cares deeply about the safety of our residents. Um, and the reason this recommendation was put forward is because um we are confident that a change of service or a change of service level is not being contemplated. Um, this decision needs to be made sooner than later, um, because we are facing that twenty twenty-five requirement. So as we heard today, we need to have a system in place by October twenty twenty-four. Um, and I'm, I'm very thankful for the work that our staff um, and MMP has done to, to prepare us for this decision. I'm concerned certainly, uh, like many people, that nine-one-one calls are, are not going to nine-one-one. We heard that today a little bit. Um, and and if there is an education um, piece that needs to be done in St. Albert, I, I think we need to start that process now. Um, and um, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Jolly. I just want to echo a couple of, of points that you've uh, made and in, and it's simply this is that we're not outsourcing primary nine-one-one services. Our, our fire uh, uh, department will get the calls that they require from nine-one-one to respond to fires in our community uh, as fast as they ever have. And uh, what we are talking about is uh, outsourcing the secondary uh, communication whereby uh, uh, the dispatch system admittedly deals with uh, calls from AHS to dispatch. Um, you know, emergency services for sure, but they also are dealing with uh, very routine administrative matters. And uh, and if we outsource these things, in the bottom line to me is, is that uh, we reap a benefit at the end of the day to the betterment of the citizens in St. Albert financially without an impact to the secondary uh, answering point for our citizens and and it's interesting that this works in plenty, many other communities within the, within the province. And uh, I, I think we can have confidence that it will happen here in St. Albert as well.
All right, thank you, Council Bermansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so my comment is, what if? What if we don't save any money once it's contracted? What if it costs us more money? We don't have proof of either of those things right now. What if our fire department as it sits now isn't doing it anymore and the new system isn't working? What's going to happen then? What if the police changes? RCMP can't do the main locate there anymore. What if it goes to provincial police? What if we need it backfire? We don't have enough information to give up what we have that works right now. So I cannot support this and um, I'll stand firm on that. Thank you.
Council Mackay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, being as my desire for uh, evidence-based decision-making didn't seem to win over the majority. I'm going to maybe go at one as being the only I believe the only member of council to be actually a first responder. And also be perhaps the only member of council that actually worked in a nine-one-one center and actually listened to the types of calls and also was um in charge of one for a very brief time. I won't say for a very long time, so I don't have all the experience that perhaps is happening and some of it is somewhat old, but let me, let's, let's not lose some of the actual benefits of actually that would, that have been presented with us by um, our actual first responders who act, who believe strongly in the, in the in the benefit. And maybe you can't put a cost on it and maybe you can't put a weight on it. But I can tell you probably of, I was trying to think even on the weekend of how many circumstances I had where a dispatcher had specific knowledge of a situation, of a location, of a type of crime, of a, of a the nuances that are going through at an extremely stressful and emotional and highly charged time that um, you just can't put a weight on. You just can't say that it um, these things are happening in other locations, so therefore we can, we should be able to do it here. I agree. I, I mean, I agree entirely that, that we're, what we're looking at here is even by agreeing to this decision today, all we're doing is actually looking at it and tailoring our. All we're doing is actually looking at it and tailoring our, our needs. And it may even come back and say that it's not achievable because we have high standards and, but I you, if we're, if we're using a clear analytical scale of cost and customer service, but we don't factor in the impacts that, that some of these calls that the lack of, uh, of having that local knowledge has, and I don't know how to more strongly emphasizes it. Because sure, the idea of contracting out public services to other jurisdictions, uh, to cut costs makes sense on a financial doctrine. Like I mentioned to Mr. Lynn, you can't put a price on a lost child. You can't put a price on a senior who doesn't get uh, rapid response because they're trying to figure out whether they should send an ambulance or an ambulance supervisor or a fire truck. I think you can't put a price on, on us, a, a situation like we've heard. So, I mean, to make it completely analytical and to say that it works in other jurisdiction, we don't have that information. We have anecdotal information that it works, but realistically wise, we, we, we've got a gold standard in our community that I, I don't really feel like I want to lose. I don't, I don't believe that, um, we have anything here that potentially shows us that we're actually going to save the money that we think we're going to save based on that information. Now, if we would have had that information come back to us and it came back saying that these were natural cost savings, then maybe I, I would actually say I could go to that. But I mean, on the bottom line for me, it's always been around, how do you put a, how do you put a, how do you put a dollar figure on something like this? How, how can you even, how can you even put a score to it as a people or a cost or a technology or a customer service? I, I, I'm, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want to get into all of the, because it would be a far too emotional argument. But I can tell you from being a first responder, having that dispatcher who knew that maybe the kids hung out in the, uh, in a certain location in the River Valley because they had, uh, gone to four or five other calls out in their, uh, time being a dispatcher. And that actually was able to, um, save that kid's from injury or harm or, or something worse. I don't think you can put a cost on that. So I, I, all we wanted in the previous one was to actually get a little bit more information about some of the options that are out there. And without that, I can't, I, I can't support moving away from what we already have because we already know it works so well. And not for cost. We can't, we can't put a financial cost on that. I'm sorry. I won't support this.
Council Hughes and then Council Kilic.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think you said it very well, Council McKay. Like, this is about whether or not we actually can put a price in the value of human value, like human value. This is what it is. And, and whether or not we think that the importance of having location, identity beyond street value is necessary for the calls to get to their place in timely fashion. And then sometimes you can give them the street address, and sometimes you can't. Sometimes the person's on the Red Willow Trail and they're like, where are you? And they're like, I don't know, Red Willow Trail. And now you have to say, give me a landmark. And if you don't know the city, you don't know the landmarks. So this type of thing is where it comes down to. And I realize that other municipalities are doing it, but other municipalities do a lot of things that we don't do. A lot of municipalities don't have fire and ambulance joined together, and we do that. So there's a lot of things that we do because we think it's to the benefit of our residents and they pay more for it, but they also get more value for it. And like I said, this is eleven dollar a year savings. And I just don't think that anybody would say that their grandmother's worth eleven dollars to save it or that their child got hurt somewhere and they, they ended up being sent to the wrong location because they just don't have the right address because the child's hurt in an unknown location. So that, to me, the importance of local knowledge is more important than three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Because, and especially because we are combining fire and medical, as I've said. Twenty-two hundred people relied on getting fire dispatched to their location to help them with a medical emergency that could not be handled by ambulance in a timely fashion. And those twenty-two hundred people needed to have dispatch be able to tell them where to go quickly. When people are panicking, it's two minutes feels like a lifetime. So other communities might be doing this, might be working well to their standards. The question is, would it work well to our standards? And I'm not going to take that risk. Thank you.
Ca- Council Kilic.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I agree, we have this high level of standards and our residents deserve that and, uh, have, have become very, uh, used to it. And as everyone has said, you know, they pay a little bit more maybe, uh, for it. But I'm, I'm confident that through good contract negotiations, um, and as we've just requested to have council input to, uh, administration as to how that contract is crafted, that we can continue to provide, uh, that level of service to our residents. Uh, we can continue to do that and, and save some money. And, uh, based on the vast majority of other areas that are also achieving that, I think they would have the same emotional discussions around how they would want their residents served, uh, north of Grand Prairie or, uh, east of Rocky Mountain House, uh, all areas that are outsourced. They, they would also want to say that their residents, um, are, deserve that high level of of service and response. So for me, um, a life anywhere in, in the world is, is important. Uh, but I believe we can still provide that high level of service through, uh, uh, contracting out of our secondary and fire dispatch. Again, not to, to belabor Counselor Broadhead's point, but it's, it's not all of the calls. It's a smaller portion of it. So, um, I, I understand the emotional side of this, but, uh, it seems to work in other jurisdictions. I believe it can work here. And through our contract, we can arrive at a good so- solid solution for the residents of St. Albert.
Thanks. I just want to start with, um, I don't want anyone on council, on staff or any resident to suppose that Council Jolly or anyone who has spoken in favor of outsourcing or dispatch does not value human life in this community. I need to be very clear on that. I think every one of us goes on council. Um, cares extremely and would never put a single resident at risk. I want to just make that very clear. Um, we're not putting a value on human life if we feel that the new level of service is equal. I did, um, actually reach out to the Mayor of Verde because Verde was the one that kept being, um, brought up as a community that does outsource. And I got an email from their, uh, Director of Community Growth and Protective Services. Si- uh, city Verde contracts the city of Red Deer Fire Department for over ten years, has been extremely happy with the service they provide. We've benefited from their upgrades to their systems and continuous growing of their dispatch staff and systems in place. So that, that's all I had from them. They're, and their, and their community growing much faster than St. Albert. They're well over seventy thousand people at this time. This is, I guess, just a conversation about, um, whether you're confident that the next gen nine-one-one system, if we contract it out, will be able to locate someone in distress using their cell phone. And that it does not rely on finding a landmark on Red Willow Trail or, or anywhere. The next gen system will be able to pinpoint your location. I, I, I think I would love to keep it in-house forever. That's my preference. But, um, I think as Council Broadhead said, residents have asked us to look for cost savings. And three hundred and forty thousand dollars is not insignificant in any way, shape or form. It's huge. And, uh, so after a whole lot of thought, a lot of research, a whole lot of talking to people, I think I'm going to support Council Jolly's motion. Council Jolly to close.
Nothing further.
Wow, call for the vote. And even yet, as I raise my finger, I don't know which one. Vote is closed. That one passes by majority with Council Bermansky, sorry, Mackay and Hughes opposed. It's four thirty, guys, two and a half hours in our chairs. Um, let's take a really quick break, maybe ten minutes of four thirty-five and then we'll come back. Um, what's next on our agenda? I think it's, I think it's the RCMP. All right, five, four thirty-five.
Counselor Hughes, Counselor Jai, you're back.
Couple of minutes early, but if we're ready, we'll go.
I'm here to light up the world here, Mayor.
Awesome. I'm here, I'm snacking, so I might turn my camera off briefly.
I think we're all snacking here too, so it's good. All right, uh, it's been early from what I said, but let's get going. So next on our agenda is, uh, the quarterly policing update from RCMP. We have Inspector Ryan.
Do you have consent agenda?
Oh. Somebody's got to keep me in line. Thank you. Uh, number five consent agenda, do you want to do that Natalie?
If Cheryl puts it in the chat, sure.
Sure, you should have been waving at me. Come on, keep me in line. You're early here.
That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one, special council meeting minutes of June thirteen, twenty twenty-two, and regular council meeting minutes of June twenty, twenty twenty-two, and seven point four, operational and fiscal review and annual report.
Thank you for that call for the vote. Voting is closed. Passes unanimously, there we go. Now we're back over to Ryan and Todd Walsh from the policing, uh, media, are you, are you co-presenting or? Okay. Ryan's like, what, I have to dissolve myself?
No, I'll go first. Um, good afternoon, I think still, uh, twenty-five to five, uh, first time presenting here at city councils, so this is great to be here in person and, uh, appreciate the, uh, the space here, so, and did enjoy the friendly fire earlier as I mentioned to Counselor Mackay. The, I will apologize in advance, this, uh, this update is, is, uh, is a bit dated, uh, it's from January first to end of March, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and we just completed our, uh, first quarter for the new fiscal year, which hopefully I can get in front of council. Hopefully in sometime in July and, uh, that information will be a lot more current. So, uh, had two community consultations in the fir-, or in the, uh, fourth quarter, uh, February seventeenth, uh, hosted a virtual town hall. And, um, that was live streamed, it was lightly attended, but however, uh, I, I believe that's just an indication the community is, is quite satisfied with, uh, policing services. Uh, March twenty-ninth, uh, I hosted a, a community diversity advisory committee meeting. We discussed the current annual performance plan. Uh, we also discussed, uh, RCMP recruitment strategies for minorities. Discuss communication cards, which is a program we're looking to adopt from Medicine Half Police Service, um, just to enhance communication with vulnerable communities and also had the RCMP engagement unit present to the group as well. And to cover the three priorities in the annual performance plan, uh, a quick review of our crime reduction. So through the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two reporting period, confidential informant recruiting was unchanged. This can be attributed to several new resource vacancies and it should be noted that several newly recruited official performance are now replacing those who have become inactive. Despite the zero percent increase in recruitment, the operational support units did achieve the target of a ten percent increase in sensitive expenditures, the actual was actually eleven percent. The months of January and February, our crime reduction unit and general duty participated in Operation Cold Start. Then included ninety-two vehicles left idling unlocked with keys in the ignition. Officers recorded thirty-one interactions with drivers and noted positive exchanges. Also included proactive patrols in the community hotspots, as well as regular patrols during school hours and in-person visits from our community policing victim services unit. Uh, due to several human resource vacancies in our crime reduction unit, curfew checks in quarter four were down. Forty-six checks were conducted resulting in five breach charges fulfilling to comply with conditions. And also our prime reduction unit worked, uh, in collaboration with the, uh, safer communities and neighborhood response team. In the quarter targeting a property and prolific, targeting property and prolific offenders. Moving on to priority two, which is mental health and vulnerable communities. Uh, this year, our community police and victim services attended numerous community stakeholder meetings. And program referrals are beginning to pick up now, uh, easy public health restrictions. There were no wraparound meetings held this year, all violent threat risk assessments were attended, but decreased in number due to staff change over at both school districts. Uh, the VTR numbers increased in the later part of the year due to education via North American Center for Threat Assessment, trauma response to the schools and community groups. Community Police and Victim Services committed to working with both school districts to increase, uh, VTR training as when opportunities arise and the bot been life skills training was facilitated by a pilot project and feedback was positive by students, teachers and facilitators. Uh, we did roll out the mental health toolkits in Q four and education was provided on their benefits and usage. Onto priority three, which is domestic violence and assaults. Uh, twenty twenty-two kickoff meeting took place in January with the domestic violence task force. Um, our C P corps replaced into a smaller working group focusing on community wraparound supports. Even for the smaller groups to identify individual families or persons who are in need of community support and connect them with this support source, who will be referred to as the point person. This point person would then determine what agency should be involved and which other stakeholders could augment first level of support wraparound. February two, the officers virtually attended the monthly meeting with the sexual assault and domestic violence task force. Community members and partners continue to discuss roles and responsibilities and how to effectively and legally share information between agencies. Domestic violence resource client guide, client guide rolled out, uh, it's the mental health resources, uh, targeting people with addiction, seniors, older adults, women, French speaking, LGBTQ two plus, children, family violence, and indigenous women. So that's just a quick, uh, overview of those three priorities. Um, just, uh, of note, uh, in consultation with the policing committee, uh, we are carrying those three priorities forward into what is now the current, um, the new fiscal year. Uh, just a couple of notes on trends and points of interest. Um, just, uh, uh, released there, I, in review of the St. Albert twenty twenty-two municipal statistics for that, that quarter four, which is January first to March thirty-first. Violence and relationship category calls are up from fifteen percent in twenty twenty-one to compared to twenty twenty-two. So the actual is one hundred and forty-four up to one hundred and sixty-five. With the category of Mental Health Act, calls are relatively unchanged through the course of the calendar year, so just a four percent increase, uh, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Uh, these are both trending in the right direction, which in part is result of the current annual performance plan initiatives and work plans. And like I said, we're, uh, we're just carrying forward that, uh, those priorities and initiatives for, uh, the current annual performance plan. So, subject to any questions anyone might have, that's all I have for you this afternoon.
All right, Mr. Walsh, did you want to come up and add anything? And then we'll pellet you both those questions at the same time.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, one of our objectives today was to present the twenty-one, uh, annual report. At our last committee meeting, we decided that we wanted to add a little bit more content to the document that we put together. So I'll be presenting that formally at the next, uh, quarterly update.
Okay.
Uh, when we're, so it's a full picture, just was, I had some gaps, since it's my first time around with it, so, uh, we'll get that, uh, to you. But some highlights from our, uh, quarter since we last met, uh, as, uh, the other, uh, committee, uh, committee, uh, uh, groups, uh, we are meeting in person, so we held our second in-person meeting, uh, last week, which was excellent. Uh, we also hosted the Alberta Association of Police Governance Conference in St. Albert, and we'd like to thank the support of, uh, the council for that. That was an excellent event and well turned out and, uh, was great to see everyone in person. We've also had a couple of guest speakers, thanks to the, uh, our detachment commander, we've spoken to or had, uh, the RCMP Professional Responsibilities Unit and Public Complaint Process come speak to the committee as well as, um, a crime prevention initiative that dealt with controlled entrances for liquor, uh, liquor, uh, venues. Some of our public engagement that we're, uh, going to be taking part in, uh, this weekend will be at our first farmer's market in a couple of years, so we're excited to get out and, uh, meet some of our fellow St. Albert, uh, colleagues and we have a second date at the end of the summer and, uh, we also are engaged with, uh, some formal training with Soul Gen, which we've been waiting a few years to get, uh, going. So we're kind of excited to do some formal training with Soul Gen and get all of our committee members. And, uh, that is all I have to report, Madam Mayor and Council.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Right, I'm going to open it up to council members for any questions. Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, I'll lead off being in my committee, thanks, thanks for, uh, wait, uh, as long as you have to present, but I'm glad you're here. Um, uh, Inspector, in relation to just general trends, I mean, you identified domestic balances up and I realized maybe all the stats aren't in and this is a somewhat dated information. Have you noticed, uh, anything else in particular coming out of? We, whether it was pandemic related or whether it was, have we done any analysis on some of the uh, causation factors in relation to some of the trends we're seeing, or is it just right now, we're just waiting?
No, I think, uh, we still a little more time to, to pass in order to, to fully realize what, uh, what types of crimes were impacted through the course of COVID. You know, there are, there are some things like, uh, the presentation, uh, from Emmett Police Service on patron scan was, was quite, uh, interesting and, uh, you know, sort of uncovered some of, some things that, that perhaps were precipitated through COVID. Um, but in terms of, uh, actual, uh, property and persons crimes, I, I, I believe, you know, time will, will tell the tale there. Um, and, uh, we'll have to take a closer look at that, uh, in conjunction with the policing committee and make decisions on if we want to adjust our priorities and initiatives accordingly.
Uh, last question, just as around staffing, I mean, are we, how are we doing with staffing, are there any concerns around uh, our levels already?
Uh, good question, uh, the, uh, the answer to that is, uh, we are, uh, seeing a, a bit of a pinch point on the general duty side, so let's see, uniform side, uh, just due to parental leave, special leaves, injuries. So we're, you know, we're running typically about ten or fifteen percent below our, uh, full-time establishment numbers, so, uh, there, there are also, um, you know, additional pressures in the summer months with officers taking well-deserved holidays. Um, you know, uh, training and, uh, we've got the Pope's visit coming up here in, uh, later this month, so that'll have an impact on resourcing levels as well. Um, but all that to say, we are, we are managing well, we're continuing to put, um, additional resources out, uh, on the weekends, uh, patrolling farmer's market, uh, getting out the trails and the parks and the carts and bikes. Um, so, uh, it's, uh, going to be very much status quo for summer twenty twenty-two.
All good. Uh, speaking of the Pope's visit. So I, I know, um, Mr. Fletcher had asked for some CPO help. Um, so is, is from the federal government, are you being asked to supply officers on the couple of days that he is in town?
Yeah, so the planning, uh, there is, is being done jointly between the, the federal and the provincial, uh, arm of the RCMP, so there will be a call for resources. Um, there's still a lot of information that we're waiting for from the planning, from the planners of, of that event. Um, but what I anticipate is we'll probably be looking at, um, sending out, uh, a good portion of our, of our officers for that, for those two days where, um, he's at, uh, the Pope's at the Commonwealth Stadium and then, uh, the, uh, the pilgrimage out in Lexington County, so, well, there will be some resourcing, uh, issues there that we'll have to assist with, uh, both provincially and federally.
And any, um, issues with recruitment at, at Depot? Um, just wondering if the new contract has maybe helped with, with recruitment.
Yeah, I, I think again, it's too early to tell, I, I, I think naturally with, with the pay equity, uh, getting established again. I think it's going to have a positive impact on recruitment and retention. Um, but, uh, what I'm hearing as of late is that Depot is not, uh, not running, uh, near, close to capacity, so hopefully, um, that starts to, uh, you know, we start to see some positive changes there and, uh, uh, recruitment starts to ramp up because there's going to be an inventory issue here eventually. And, uh, I think it's important that the RCMP, uh, continues to, to, uh, try and draw the, the right candidates for that.
Thank you, I agree. Counselor Bermansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just two quick questions. I noticed in the maps that it shows like opportunity crimes are very, very close to the trail. For the best part, is it generally people passing through the city or coming to the city to commit crimes, or is it from within the city?
Yeah, great question. Uh, I don't really have much of an answer, uh, uh, other than, uh, it's, it's, it's just, uh, you know, it happens to be where, where people that are looking to commit crimes of opportunity happen to be. So if they're traveling in, um, you know, more secluded, uh, areas, um, residential areas versus commercial, uh, areas, what they're targeting for, for their crimes, if they're looking for, um, you know, stuff that's laying loose in yards at night versus, you know, maybe, uh, a more, um, uh, I guess a more, uh, targeted approach to, uh, breaking into commercial, um, buildings, businesses, et cetera. So we did have a rash of, of breaking enters in the Rial Park in the spring. Uh, thankfully, that's, uh, that's, uh, that trend is, is no longer, um, but, um, as, as we all know, criminals do, do travel, so, um, you know, and, and that's where those trends are, there has to be a little bit sporadic at times.
And one second question, uh, why are the collisions up thirty-two percent all of a sudden? Any reasoning for that?
Um, I know the Gazette did cover, uh, some of, some of, uh, some of the, that increase in trends, uh, we do have a dedicated, uh, reservist constable that, that takes care of all the collision reporting and, uh, he thought that, uh, you know, some of it had to do with, with just, uh, a pretty brutal winter, uh, just in terms of freezing rain and, and snow and, uh, I don't know that that increase, uh, carried through the spring. Um, but, uh, you know, it could be just a, a matter of people, um, in the rush and not paying attention, trying to, you know, break, breaking out of two years of being hemmed up and, uh, and maybe just not paying it close enough attention in parking lots and tight, tight quarters, so, uh, probably some, some variables, uh, that could contribute to that as well.
And so in the last question, what's the provincial code trap like that took a deep line, could you explain that?
Provincial, uh, just, it, just in reference to, uh, provincial legislation, so like the Traffic Safety Act, um, uh, rules of the road, highway regulations, uh, vehicle equipment regulations, those are all provincial statutes, so.
And it's down quite a bit then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Kilic. Uh, thank you, it's just a follow-on question to the Pope's visit and specifically the fairly large pilgrimage that's being anticipated out to, uh, Lake Sanit-, Lake San An and that, do you, do you know if we have good communication systems out in that area for, uh, emergency RCMP, whether it be cell phone coverage or your own, uh, standalone radio network out there, uh, to handle that?
I would think that that's going to be very much at the forefront with the planning committee. Um, they'll, they'll be taking all those considerations into account when they're planning for that event, so, uh, communications, logistics, all that stuff will be planned at a very high level and if it's not adequate, they'll find a way to make it adequate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no further questions. So did you mention earlier that you, you wanted to come back? Well, early August, maybe, or?
Yeah, quarter one just wrapped up end of June, so I'd like to get in front of council with some more, uh, a little bit more current information, so, uh, whenever you can slot me in in July or August, uh, would be, would be, uh, would be ideal.
All right. Sadly, this is our last council meeting.
You take the summer off, huh?
Well, we have, we have committee next week. And then, uh, we do take a couple of weeks off, so maybe the first one back in August. Okay, I'll, I'll make a little note then, we'll talk about it on agenda.
Nothing for Todd?
Nothing for Todd, but actually Todd, how, how, I'm, I'm curious about the complaints officer and the amount of workload that, that position has.
It, it's constant, we get about two a month and there's usually two active, I know there's two active right now, uh, but, uh, it is, uh, quite intensive for a volunteer position. She is, uh, very active, very engaged with the community and works with Ryan's team and Ryan himself to resolve it at an early level as well. So it, it is a big work job and we've seen an uptick in it, in, uh, which we wanted to because we've been promoting it quite a bit. And we hope to promote it even more, uh, once we get into. once we get into the farmer's market. So.
Good. I'm glad that the two of you are working well together on that one.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. I see no further questions. Council McKay, this is your committee. There's a
I put the motion button.
Oh, thank you.
Excuse me, that the St. Albert RCMP municipal policing report quarter four twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two and the St. Albert Municipal Detachment Crimes Statistics provided as attachment to the July fourth twenty twenty two council agenda report entitled Quarterly Policing Update Quarter Four Twenty Twenty One Slash Twenty Twenty Two be received as information.
Awesome. Except that motion, anything to add?
No, I mean, you heard, I mean, again, part of this was a little bit late in coming to us and so probably meant that there was not the not the more relevant information. So I look forward in relation to seeing some of the new trends coming forward and some of the other actions that you will, you know, you'll hear back coming from the committee because I know the committee is actually engaged. As you heard from Mr. Walsh, there are going to be attending farmer's market, but there's still the intent to engage with the youth committee and other committees throughout the year around continuing identifying priorities. So it's working quite well, actually.
Good. I see no one else wanting to speak, so call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, council, let's see if we can get through seven point three before dinner. Seven point four is on consent and then we could have a kind of a working dinner while we're in camera with our CAO. It's cold food. It's not even five o'clock, Council McKay. You can make it.
Mayor, don't we still have Council McKelick's motion at the end, just as a reminder?
Have the EVs.
Yep.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. O'Flair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll be fairly brief, I hope, unless there are a lot of questions because I we've tried to be fairly comprehensive in the administrative report that you have before you. First of all, I I I do apologize. There was a bit of a technical glitch, as you know, on Friday. And I'm hoping that by by email, by an attachment to email, everyone got the document. Hopefully.
Yeah, I got it right in the pack.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, it's some of you got it through the packet. I know some didn't. So as long as everyone got it, that's fine. I I also apologize for the for the typo in the alternative motion that references calling a committee of the whole meeting by two thousand and two. I know my my children and grandchildren say I always live in the past, but really that's that wasn't the intention there. I can see some some of the more elderly council members laughing at that. I wonder why. Anyhow. Okay, on to the the main, the main point being that there are two, two things before council tonight. First of all, do you want to keep the standing committee model of governance or do you not? And then the secondary question would be, if you do want to get rid of it, do you want to replace it with anything else? So the admin report tries to deal with both of those questions. Obviously, this is fundamentally a council decision, right? Administration can give its best recommendation, which we have. But ultimately, I just want to make it clear. I I think you know this already. Whatever council decides is the best way to govern, to structure its governance, administration will fully support. In particular, I will say that Cheryl, the deputy city clerk and her whole team of ledge officers are outstanding and they will fully one hundred percent support whatever council wants to do. So that's that's not an issue, right? We've already canvassed that with them. There's no concerns. They can arrange their workdays, workloads as required. So on the first question as to whether you would want to keep it, uh, we we did make some observations in the report and I can summarize them very simply. I don't, we don't speaking for administration, we don't think that the standing committee model has been as successful as might have been hoped. And the reasons are set out in the report. I won't belabor them. So that's that's the first question. Do you agree with administration's assessment that the the model of standing committees hasn't really worked out as well as one might have hoped when it was adopted? The second question is, if you agree that it hasn't, and if you think it should be abandoned, what could replace it? And there, I I just want to make a couple of comments. You've seen the the recommendation for what could replace it. We've emailed at the request of Counselor Hughes. We've emailed an actual sample calendar. So hopefully all of you have that. So if you're more visual people, you can get an idea, you know, from a visual as well as just the words. The 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 idea is to be sure that council members have a full opportunity to discuss all of the many items and there will be more probably coming up as this council term goes on. The many items you have to deal with in this in these I will say difficult times, particularly financially. And also to be sure that you have a venue in which you can come to, come to the discussion with a a problem-solving collaborative approach. And we assumed as administration that would be what the majority of council members, at least if not all of you, would want to do. And it it occurred to us that you already know a lot about the committee of the whole structure, that that's that's the structure that gets used for the budget deliberations. It's been very successful in that context, as as we all know. It's it's allowed for a lot of good freewheeling discussion without the trammels of procedure. And frankly, in the last two budget cycles that I've been here for, actually the last three, frankly, it's worked. So our feeling was there's no reason why the committee of the whole model could not be used to deal with a whole broad array of things that council has to deal with. The and and then after councils had as much of a discussion as they need to have, come to a council meeting, which presumably would only have to be regularly scheduled once a month, as I pointed out in the report. If something is more urgent, if something has to go to council sooner than that, the mayor always has the option to call a special meeting, right? That's 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 not uncommon. We're we're all familiar with it. But the feeling is that if we were to keep the first two meetings of a month, keep them reserved and you may not need both of them. There may be a month in which there's just not that much business. You need two committee of the whole meetings. But if you have it in your calendars, have it reserved, and if necessary, you have both of those Mondays for committee of the whole discussion. Then you go to council on the last meeting of the month and bear in mind, we're also recommending you reserve the third meeting of a month for public hearings, which which sometimes are very quick, as we know, and sometimes take longer. And that third meeting of the month, if necessary, could also be expanded to do other business. As long as it's dedicated for public hearings, it could also do other things as well. So there's a lot of flexibility, we believe, in the model that we're proposing. And the and it it gives council members who who had concerns about this, the feeling that you know, there it's it's not that the some of their colleagues, you know, have a vote and they don't. Under this model, everyone would have a vote. It's committee of the whole council. That's why it's called committee of the whole. So everyone would get a say, everyone would get a vote on a recommendation to the to the upcoming council meeting. And excuse me. And also, maybe this, maybe this is wishful thinking. I don't know. One would hope that if those meetings are held in the Douglas Cardinal Boardroom, more members of the public might be inclined to to show up because it is a little less imposing to sit sort of across a table from a council member as opposed to standing up in the catbird seats. No. So some people don't mind standing up there. Other people get very nervous. I know, they've told me. So that's basically it. I just want to make these points. And it's really up to council how they want to proceed. So unless there are questions, I will cease to speak and let council do its thing.
I'm sure there will be questions. And I already have Council Hughes hand up.
Thank you. Okay, so I understand that we're going to have things to debate in the future. What I'm trying to figure out is there are many things that come to council that don't go to committee first that don't need to go to committee first. And so are we just basically going to take everything that went to council and then throw it at going at committee? Because we're generally able to fill up two council meetings a month with committees. So I'm trying to figure out the rationale for the two. I understood what you said, but I I mean, are we just anticipating everything going to committee now and then going to council? That's my first concern. I have a few concerns, this potential calendar. But what is your rationale for, is that the intention is everything's going to go to committee first?
Through the chair to Counselor Hughes, the answer is no. The, as you correctly pointed out, Counselor, there are some things that that really do have to go to council and the the most obvious example is all the land planning bylaws. They they don't go to committee because they couldn't go to committee because those go to public hearings. So those have got to go directly to council for first reading and then stay with council through the public hearing process. So, you know, committee would have no part of matters like that. And also, again, it's it's really in council's hands how much control you want to have over what goes to committees. If if nothing else changed, it would still be the agenda planning process that would determine what to root to committee the whole and what to send directly to council. But council would be giving its, if you will, giving its general direction that that things that that are susceptible of, you know, non-adversarial sort of collaborative type discussion should go to committee of the whole. And the only other thing you said is again, I I guess I can't do anything other than reiterate that the intention, the recommendation rather, is that you reserve as many as the first two meetings of a month for committee of the whole, understanding that that may not, you may not need that much time, particularly if the committee of the whole meetings start at nine thirty. As I recommended, it could be that one good, good, long meeting starting at nine thirty might be enough for that month. Right? But we've all seen that when this council gets together, things tend to take longer than you anticipated that they might. And and that's just the way it is, right? And and so our feeling is administration was rather than try to, you know, make council members feel like they're rushed, better to reserve two meetings a month for committee of the whole in case that time is needed.
Okay, so in your opinion, the committee of the whole meetings are more important than to have the council meeting because with only one council meeting, my other concern is that with one council meeting, it prevents us from being able to have regular abilities to approve items that have a bit more of an urgent nature, though calling special council meetings every single time. And there's a predictive element to it. So I don't know if he's calling me. I don't know why that phone's ringing. There's a predictive element to it and I'm trying to figure out like we've never had a committee meeting structure, even with the two of them, that need to go over past that day. So with that, it would look like we're almost having no, like I'm just looking presumably, we have no committee meeting on the second, basically the second Monday of the month. And then we'd have only one council meeting for approvals of everything else. So and then and then the public hearings that would just be public hearings, there would be no council meeting in addition to it. It would just be public hearings. Is that what I'm hearing? Is your suggestion?
Through the chair, most of what you just said, Counselor Hughes, I don't think I should comment on. It's it's basically your opinion for debate. The you did ask a question at the end, though, and that's a very good one. The idea of administration's idea, at least of reserving the third Monday for public hearings, doesn't mean it would be exclusively for public hearings. If something has been discussed or something needs to go to council sooner than the fourth Monday of a month, then that third Monday could certainly be structured as a council meeting at which you have all your public hearings and anything else that needs to go that quickly. So you, again, this is a, I I guess I'm emphasizing that what we're recommending could be a very flexible structure that could be adapted and the time could be used as as items arise, basically.
How many public hearings do we typically have in a month? Do we have those stats? Since we just kind of get them all over the place right now and they're not all on one day, I just don't remember.
Through the chair, I I didn't gather specific statistics on that.
Busier in the than the fall, for sure.
I'm just worried about how many we're compiling into one day, Mayor Hare. That's it. If anybody else has other questions, I personally, I'd like to turn it up number three. But anyway, if anybody has other questions, anyone, let them go.
Oh, I'll go to Council Bermansky. Go ahead.
To the mayor, thank you. I just had the one question, like I attended the standing committees, generally both of them in one day and it was, you know, usually about a half a day. So my concern if we're blocking out two days, is there going to be stuff, you know, added to the agenda that may not need to be added to that agenda? For filler, so to speak, if we, or is it just that, can we just add the second day without having it on the calendar if ever needed?
Through the chair, that's that's the 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 concern, I think, is is legitimate. The the old saying that the agenda expands to fill the available time, that that one would hope that wouldn't happen. All I would say is that a lot of responsibility under this or under any model, there's no model that works if people are not going to support it. But if 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 this model hypothetically were adopted, it would put a certain responsibility on administration on the agenda planning process to be sure that the the, you know, what you described, Counselor, did not happen. I I agree with you that that would be very unfortunate if people just padded agendas just because there's available time.
Right.
And and there is a responsibility on all of us to to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you. Council McKay.
You actually raised my question with your last comment in relation to agenda planning process. How do you see that working right now? We had the chairs of the standing committees attend with the mayor and the deputy mayor, if that person so chose. How do you see that going forward now?
Through the chair, again, that's another matter on which council might want to express its majority opinion. I I would point out right now, if you read the procedural bylaw closely, it's actually the mayor who sets the agendas. The the chairs of the standing committees certainly attend and give advice. And if there are no standing committees, then then no one who has that title would attend. I have heard it expressed, I believe even by the mayor, that there'd be really no problem with extending an open invitation to all council members to show up at that meeting. And and that, to me, I think that would be a good substitute for what happens now.
Yeah, no, fair enough. I'm just was wondering what your thoughts would have been on that. Just going back on having the two committee of the whole meetings. Is it? I mean, when I, and I appreciate all of the work and the background work, they your staff or you did in relation to providing, filling in the charts.
Just just to interrupt it, I I want to give a shout out and full kudos, led services staff, all of those. Although that background information, all those statistics, they put it all together in a short time. They just did an outstanding job and I think they deserve to be commended for that. And thank you, council, for doing that.
No, I appreciate that. I I would. Yeah, I anyways, I appreciate you acknowledging him as well. So I guess the the challenge I have is going back to maybe the some of the other opinion or other comments and maybe opinions is my worry is, is like council meetings are now, the last couple of council meetings have gone five, six, eight hours. Like is it your belief that having two committee of the holes would actually not make that one meeting out of month actually quicker or you see that? Because I see potentially that 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 council meeting will be full, like very full, very, very lengthy even, potentially.
So, Counsel, that's an excellent question. I guess the the best way I can answer it is that to say that in my experience in places where the committee structure like we have now is well-established and in place, typically committee meetings take a little while, right? Most counselors that that are on committees in those municipalities have to tell their employers if they're working or their spouses if they're not. You know, you're not going to see me this day, right? They're they're long. And then conversely, the council meetings tend to go very quickly. Things get adopted on what we call consent. That that term isn't used everywhere, but it's the same idea. My assumption would be that if you take away the concern that some counselors have, that they they really weren't full participants at the committee level. If you replace that with a structure where they can be and will be and must be full participants, you could probably pass most things at the council meeting on consent and it would probably not get pulled from the agenda. I may be wrong. But that was, that's the assumption administration made, that if you have thorough vetting at the committee of the whole level with the kind of collaborative problem-solving approach that 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 promotes, you might find that council meetings, even if the agendas have a lot of stuff on them, go really quickly on consent.
All right. Council project, go ahead.
I'm ready to make the motion, Madam Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, uh, read the recommended motion. That the standing committee governance model be discontinued and that effective immediately, no further meetings of either the community living standing committee or the community growth and infrastructure standing committee be scheduled. Secondly, that administration bring to council at the regularly scheduled meeting on August the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, a bylaw to repeal bylaws thirty-nine slash twenty nineteen and forty slash twenty nineteen that establishes standing committees together with motions to amend other bylaws and amend or rescind other motions as requested to reflect the discontinuance of the standing committee governance model. Third, that a new governance model be implemented commencing in September of twenty twenty-two, under which matters for council decision are initially discussed at regularly scheduled committee of the whole meetings that are ordinarily held in the Douglas Cardinal Boardroom with options for participants to attend electronically commencing at nine thirty on the first and or second Monday of each month. Then either A, transmitted with a committee of the whole recommendations to a regularly scheduled council meeting in council chambers with options for participants to attend electronically commencing at two P M. On the fourth Monday of each month, in the case of matters that do not require more immediate action by council or be transmitted with committee of the whole recommendations to a special council meeting in council chambers with options for participants to attend electronically called by the mayor for a date and time prior to the fourth Monday of the month. In the case of time sensitive matters, cannot await the regularly scheduled monthly council meeting on the fourth Monday of the month. Fourth, that the third Monday of each month be reserved for public hearings in council chambers with options for participants to attend electronically scheduled to commence either at nine thirty A M. Or two uh, P M., depending on the number of public hearings on the agenda and the anticipated time each will require. And finally, that administration bring to council at the regularly scheduled meeting on August the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, such bylaw recommendations or motions as a regularly, uh, excuse me, as are required to implement the new governance model described in motions three and four.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Hold on, hold on. Um, I'm going to split these for sure, number one and two versus, because that's the standing committee piece of it, and the rest is the new governance model. So Counselor Broadhead, when you get into debate, we'll, we'll do them separately. That, okay?
So one and two together?
Yeah, and then we'll do the separate. So Counselor McKay, is that what you were requesting a split?
Yeah, I was just gonna do exactly that.
Just give me some times. And I saw, okay. All right, I accept the motions, Counselor Broadhead. Go ahead.
All right, then, speaking on, uh, motions one and two, then, uh, basically what these two um, require is that the current standing committee structure of the C G I S and C L S C, uh, be discontinued. I think our experience over the last couple of years has been mixed. Um, certainly for, for some, uh, it didn't work at all. And, uh, and if it doesn't work for all, it doesn't work for any in many respects. So, so for, from that perspective, I think this is a good, uh, first step, is to say we gave this, uh, I think Mr. Fletcher used the word to me earlier today, we gave it a trial ride or something like that, and we did. We gave it a good, uh, a good, uh, test and, uh, and while it worked in some respects, it certainly didn't work at all. And now we're, uh, we're going to say goodbye to that schedule and, uh, governance model and move on to a, a new one that will hopefully work better for, uh, this council.
All right, anyone else on debate? Counselor Killik, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly from my perspective as a new counselor, um, and as Counselor Bermansky mentioned, it was almost, uh, mandatory, felt obligated to attend both, uh, committee, subcommittee meetings. And, uh, one I had a vote on and one I didn't. But to understand and fully hear the debate that took place with the other counselors, hear the background or information that had been prepared by administration, um, and have that if you will, more casual discussion time. Um, it was almost imperative that I attended both uh, to get that, that background information and understanding, and it helped me immensely when it came time to take a vote uh, at council and become informed. It, it probably did save a lot of time at council, although, uh, it may not be evident in the length of our council meetings. But, um, so we gave it a try. Um, I would much prefer going back to one integrated um, meeting where, again, we'll share all that same information, we'll all get the information at the same time, but I think it'd be very helpful uh, to have a council of the whole meeting as opposed to the two, uh, two subcommittee, uh, meetings that we currently have. Recognize that I still had a vote. It's not about having a vote. Um, because when the items did come to council, I, I had the opportunity either pull it from consent as Mr. LaFara said, um, and I could have my vote that way. But I think we could speed up things by having that debate at council of whole and having more things maybe go on consent. Uh, because we would all have our input, yeah, at, at that time. So I'm certainly in favor of, of, uh, getting uh, changing the current structure, um, to something new.
Counselor Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I just, I want to thank Admin for bringing forward this recommendation. Um, I really wasn't sure what they were going to come forward with, and I think that the acknowledgement that, uh, the committee of the whole would be a better representation to make the decisions, I, I think was, I appreciated that because I, I've thought that for quite some time. Um, I think that everybody needs to be at all the meetings if you want to have a vote on them, and you need to be able to make amendments at the spot because that's going to lead to actual consent agendas at the end where everybody's comfortable with the decision or at least feels they've been heard, um, both wholly. So, um, as far as one and two go, I agree with it. Um, number three is a different matter. So three and on will be a different discussion, but I, I do appreciate the fact that, um, administration is recommending this. Thanks.
All right, seeing no one, um, jump it in, I'll close off before I hand it back to you, Counselor Broadhead. I'm, I'm going to be opposing this. And I'm sure nobody is, is wondering why. Counselor Killik, I'm going to address what you just said because you seem to get it. You honestly do. You said you don't have a vote because no one votes. It is just a recommendation that moves forward to council and some of it stays on exam, some of it doesn't. And I hundred percent agree and have been impressed with your attendance. And Counselor Bermansky said both because you're new and, uh, and yeah, well, you're just an eager beaver. But that's, that's the, that's the beauty of the current option is the choice. I, I'll point out that I don't think Wes, have you ever tended the committee living committee? Nope, he's not. So
You're always invited.
Yeah, invited, and he knows that, and that's the important part of this conversation is that, um, we're part-time counselors. You all are part-time. And Wes has, I assume, and I have full confidence, looked at those agendas, maybe watched some of the YouTube videos, read it at council, is comfortable with the recommendations, and if not, he can pull. Uh, Counselor Hughes rarely attends the C G I meeting. That's her prerogative. And Natalie jumps in, um, when she is, there's an item of interest. So I think, I think the current system works perfectly. And, um, Counselor Broadhead, you said, uh, the model doesn't work for anyone or for, not for everyone? Well, as Mr. LaFara said, no model will work if it isn't fully supported. And to tell you the truth, I don't feel like this, the standing model was ever given the full, um, support to make it work. And so if we go back to standing committee model, it might work for Counselor Bermansky, Counselor Killik, who are new and want, and me, and Counselor McKay, who's an eager beaver, who wants to attend anything, but it will not work for those counselors who are confident in their colleagues to make the decisions without them. So that doesn't work for them. That, that's my problem is, is Counselor Broadhead, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Jolly, who do, you know, have a good, good look at it and feel their input is not required and just trust their colleagues to get the work done. Um, it doesn't work for them. So I, 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 I know this works in communities our size, smaller and bigger elsewhere, and, um, I wish I'd done the math of the number of hours we have spent in council or in committee that just gets passed on consent. And so it, I believe it, it honestly does work. When I read some of your observations, Mr. LaFara, about what page is that on? It's on page forty-two, uh, you know, a large number of manders that have mandates that would have been in the committee went straight to council. I totally acknowledge that that was probably partly the mayor's fault in gender planning and setting. But I thought we were getting better. I thought we have that discussion set agenda plan, and we were pushing more to committee. And just the last three to four months, we've been front-ending it, so there is more there. So like, I, I, I appreciate some of the work, but, um, I think it should have been given a more of a chance because what's, what you're proposing isn't going to work for many members of council. Counselor Broadhead.
And well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I have anything more to add. Uh, I think it's, uh, it will be interesting to see how council votes on these first two.
Call for the vote. Sorry, voting's closed? And that motion passes by majority? It's just myself opposed? Okay, let's talk about the next structure. Page, back to page. So Counselor Broadhead, uh, do you want, I'll give you opening arguments on three through five.
Okay, well, so basically this is the, uh, uh, the description or the clauses that would, uh, empower the move to a committee of the whole, uh, meeting. And, uh, so and then it establishes then the third meeting of the month for, uh, basically committee, I mean, uh, council committees for public hearings, and then the fourth one for the regular business of council. And, and basically that's what these, uh, these two, uh, three, uh, clauses suggest. Um, I, I might add that, um, the committee of the whole meetings are scheduled for nine thirty or in, uh, in reference to the, uh, the particular meeting, uh, related to the, uh, public hearings that starts at two. So just to note the time changes.
Quick question, Mr. LaFara, because it was not, um, an alternative anywhere in our package. If we don't accept the new model that you proposed, what motion will we require to just go back to the pre-standing committee model where we had two council meetings a month and one committee of the whole? Or no, we had three? I think we had three council meetings a month and one committee of the whole before this change. Anyway, if we, if we disagree with what you're proposing, what, how do we go forward? Can we just vote this down and then let you come back with another model?
Uh, so you, you could do either one. I mean, since we're coming back on the fourth, sorry, on the fifteenth anyway, with the necessary bylaw amendments to get to discontinue the existing structure, you could wait for us to come back with another, you know, another set of amendments for a different structure. I would, frankly, I'm going to wait and hear what the discussion is. And, uh, if there is majority support for that, that's, that's simple to do.
Okay, perfect. All right. Sorry about that, Counselor Broadhead. Okay, we're into debate. So Counselor Hughes.
Oh, sorry, did not Counselor Broadhead get to do debate? Or if you just read it?
You did, you opened it.
Okay, got it. Sorry. I'm just, I'm back. So Mayor Hand, to ask, answer your question, our turn number three also is that we could do a standing committee of the whole to discuss how we want to proceed forward next month. So we could just meet and hash it out if we can't come to an easy consensus on this. Personally, I understand where you're coming from with this. I don't think this is going to work logistically. Um, and I, I have no problem doing things that are going to be more efficient, but I just don't see this working. I, I don't see having two committee of the whole meetings as necessary, and I don't think that having only one council meeting is, it's going to make for an extremely long night. The majority of the stuff on committees right now is still put through on consent. And it is not dragging, the ones that are not put on consent and are discussed, do not drag the meeting out for more hours. And we are having eight-hour meetings in light of that. And even if we were to take those off, we would still have six-hour meetings minimum, if not seven-hour meetings, even if we had two meetings a month. So I think that not acknowledging that a minimum of two meetings a month is not going to serve us well. And I think that putting two committee of the whole meetings where we've never had it, we're starting at nine thirty, we should be able to come to an end by five o'clock that day. If we didn't, the mayor is welcome to schedule another committee of the whole meeting impromptu later on in that week. But the idea of having an impromptu committee of the council to handle matters when, that's, that's difficult. We're trying to schedule seven people's um, schedules. We're trying to deal with Mayor Heron's schedule, which is packed to the rafters with her and her, um, A U M A, new name, um, of the municipalities requirements. And so to have predictability in the schedule for council, for staff, and for the public to know when the meeting should be, I think would be serving us best. So I, I'm, like, I'm trying to wordsmith this so it would work, but basically I think that what we had before wasn't broken. And we've come to a system now that we're now trying to change something that wasn't broken before. And so I think that we need to have a minimum of two council meetings, and we do not need two committee of the whole meetings. So I'm really not sure how to word this, Mayor Heron. I, I'm willing to do an amendment to say remove on three, remove first and or with just put second Monday of the month. But then I also need to have a motion that says an amendment in addition to it that says to have, uh, a council meeting on the first Monday of the month. Which, I'm not sure how to slip that in there. So I'd like to have it as an amendment because if that would, if that works, I'd pass it, and then we don't have to have a committee of the whole meeting.
So what are you proposing?
That three A is amended to remove the words first and or. So it'd just be second Monday of the month. And that we need to add another number that says that the first Monday of the month is a, a regular council meeting.
Yeah, okay, I get what you're saying. So you're proposing the first and third Mondays of the month are council, and the second Monday is committee of the whole?
First and fourth right now are council, but I think the third should be flexible to be council as well. So I don't know, this is just a, this is a dog's breakfast in my mind. That's why I'm willing to go to a committee of the whole because the other challenge we have is saying the public hearings may be at nine thirty, maybe at two o'clock. Again, we have no consistency. And then if we're having a council meeting in addition to that, are we doing them all at nine thirty then? Or like, this becomes inconsistent.
Mr. LaFara, he's listening and someone's taking notes. Because I, I, so just to be, just to, if we vote this, these last down, when we come in August, you could propose a new model based on the conversation.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, or we could have a committee of the whole meeting on the to cover it if we needed to as well, and then, and then we could pass it and have a bit more of a casual discussion about it. So I'm open to either, but the way it is right now. So I guess my question is, do, um, Counselor Broadhead, would you consider that friendly to take out the words first and or for three? And add the
We're getting a little too confused about what that would look like, Counselor Hughes.
Okay.
That's okay. Your suggestion of having the calendar sent to us was, was brilliant.
Yes.
Yes.
Sometimes I get something right. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to leave it and vote against it, and then hopefully we can hash it out the next month. That's what I'm hoping for because as it stands right now, I don't think it's going to serve the public or council or administration well. And so with that, with the assumptions that committee of the whole will be all that we need, and we need fewer council meetings, I think we're going to regret that decision. So that's what I would say. Thanks.
Hey, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. Um, I also think that we should have one committee of the whole and two council meetings in a month. Um, I think that would serve us well. But, um, possibly more importantly, uh, our, our procedure bylaw needs to be updated that right now, I believe, is the biggest barrier to, um, efficient council meetings. Um, and a, a change for a schedule along with an update to our procedure bylaw, um, could, could absolutely help us, um, streamline how we do business. That's all.
All right. Alright. Counsel, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna be brief. I I I too, I I was intrigued by this. I have to admit, I was intrigued by this because I. I I would want it to work, but I'm not as confident that we could get everything on the consent agenda and actually accomplish what. Um, I think would be the intent of the having the two committee of the whole, so. Um, I'm gonna vote against it, because I think the, I believe strongly that um, we need more than the one meeting. I just don't think logistically we can accomplish what we need to have done in. In only one meeting, um, although I would like to try. The um, the fourth uh, bullet uh, part of the motion, rather, the. Having the public hearings on Monday, that's also intriguing, and I would like to be able to um, certainly um. See if that can be accomplished, but um, for the purposes of right now, I'm gonna, I'll I'll be voting against the uh, motion.
Alright, Counsel Kilic.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I would be voting against this the way it's worded. I think we do need uh, two council meetings, quite honestly, to be able to get through the number of items that we, we have. I I do like the starting earlier part, uh, in particular, because. Not not for my time, I'm more than happy to stay here until seven or eight o'clock. But the number of people that we have stay on the line. In staff at administration. Uh, too late in the evening, on the, on the off chance that we might ask them a question. Is uh, both commendable to the, to administration and staff that they are on the line. In case we ask them a question. Um, often, which is just five minutes out of a late council meeting. But uh, so so I applaud that they're there, but it just does not make sense to me that that's a good. Use of all of that administration's uh, time to uh, be on the line just in case we. We ask them. So I'm I'm happy to see that the meetings are uh, starting earlier. Uh, so that they can maybe be accomplished within a, a regular, you know, eight to. I don't know, five, six uh, timeframe, business day, but um. Uh, I I do believe we would probably need to have, still have two council meetings. And part of that is so that we can still continue to have good uh, public access to. Um, to our public coming in on, on smaller items. Uh, as well as communication and. And openness uh, of getting that information out in a timely way through our. Various uh, communication and and media channels as well. So I think there's value. In having more than just one council meeting uh, as proposed. Uh, a a month.
Alright. I I'll be voting against this because I, right off the bat, I think one council meeting a month is not enough. Uh, and so here's my input for for ledge. Two council meetings a month, I don't care if they're the first and the third or the second and the fourth, doesn't really matter. Um, I think that gives more predictability to the public, instead of calling, the mayor calling council meetings kind of ad hoc. I think. It, the scheduled meetings is important. Uh, and of course, as Counsel Hughes said very well, it's easier for, to call committee of the whole than a council meeting. So if we need to do two committee of the wholes a month. We didn't finish on day one, then yeah, let's just do one that same week and just finish it off. Uh, Counsel Kilic was talking about starting earlier. Uh, council still starts at two, according to the proposed model. I'd be completely supportive of council starting earlier. Earlier than two, and that'd be a good debate in the fall. Counsel Broadhead would like nine. He's been working for that for four years. But I think we are a mature enough city that we don't need to be meeting at ten o'clock at night, um, which doesn't really serve the public well. Uh, and then as for the public hearings. I think we should leave it the way it is and schedule them during a regular council meeting with the option, and I don't know if it's in procedures, but we've done it in the past. To call um, a s- a special day for a public hearing when they, when we know they're gonna be long. That wa- that worked fantastic and worked very well, um, but I think the majority of public hearings in the first six months of this term have been. Under an hour, and I don't want. Um, currently, we actually are only here three Mondays a week, and then the fourth Monday you have off, essentially. This is keeping you four Mondays a week, and so I'd rather see if we can get it done during a council meeting uh, at a. Regular scheduled time that the developers are comfortable with and stuff, so um, I I'd rather keep the public hearings at council. And I have nothing else. Counsel brought it to close.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was intrigued too by uh, what you put together here, Mr. LaFleur and your team put together. I, you know, I'm agnostic a little bit about whether we need two cows or one cow, um, but um.
You need two cows to get a calf.
Anyway, uh, what I am, I'd like to pitch again, is the idea that uh, we we start our uh. Committees of council at nine thirty in the morning. The uh. If one thing that COVID taught us is that we can uh, operate virtually. And I think it it has opened up a uh, a whole vista of opportunity for our public to participate. In the governance of our uh, of our community without having to come here in person. And that was the reason why we had council meetings late, so that they could come here after work. And participate in public hearings at five o'clock in the afternoon. I, I firmly believe that that uh, that time has passed. And uh, they can participate virtually in in the activities of council at any time of the day. And if we start our committee meetings at nine thirty. Uh, I believe that the city gets the very best time of our days and the best decisions that we make, uh, because we're all fresh. Instead of making decisions at nine or ten at night. Anyway, that's my close, Madam Mayor.
Alright, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails, so we'll come back in August with some other options. Sound good? Alright, Counsel, do you want to have dinner break? Oh. Did you? Sorry, did I interrupt you? I apologize.
No, I I don't want to prolong this. I just wanted to just quickly summarize what I heard and what you can expect. In August is not only the bylaw to repeal, the committee bylaws. And the consequential amendments to other bylaws and motions, but also a new proposal, which probably would be in the form of a motion. Which would, to 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 make it clear that there'll be two council meetings a month. And uh, in the gap between them would be the perfect time to throw a, a committee of the whole meeting, all of them to start. At nine thirty. The council meetings and the committee of the whole meeting, to be sure, there's lots of time for any discussion. That's what, unless I hear differently now, that's what I would propose to come forward with.
Sounds good.
With some tweaks, of course.
Alright. Do you guys want to stop a break? Okay, let's take a, let's not take the full break, cause. We only really have a couple of things left, so I don't want to delay delay this. Plus, I gotta get out of here before seven, or Mr. LaFleur will. Claim victory. Alright, um. It's five forty, six o'clock, uh, those of you at home, is that good? Okay.
Everyone.
So next on our agenda is. There was no, okay, sorry, the operational fiscal review we passed on consent and we just received it for information. And then there's no emergent items. So we're at information request, notice of motion and announcement. So Council Kilic does have a notice of motion. And he intends to also bring forward the waiver. Waiver of notice and try to get it debated tonight. So I'll have you read the motion in. And then I'll get you to read in the wave notice motion and we'll debate that first. Do you have it, Council Kilic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, that like to bring a motion. To council, the council directs administration to install two electric vehicle charging stations. At St. Albert Place parking lot in substitution for the charging stations approved. For the NACI transit station as part of the municipal climate change action center electric vehicle charging program. And that $150,000 be funded from the capital reserve to complete the work.
All right, now I'll get you to read in the your request to waive notice.
And the second part of that is so that we can. Have full debate today and make a decision this evening is that. The 21 day notice period for a council motion pursuant to section 23 dot six. Of the procedure by law is hereby waived. And that debate on the motion occurred the July 4th, 2022 council meeting.
All right. Any questions before I accept the weaving of notice motion? Council Hughes, this is a question on waving notice? Is it? Okay, go ahead. Yep.
This is to me, yes?
Yes, sorry. Yep.
Okay, um, sorry, my internet cut out for a second. So it could have been you. Said it right. I didn't hear you. So is there an imminent need to discuss this tonight? Or? I'm looking to looking to admit, what is the the need to have this done at this particular decision time?
Ready to answer that one.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship and the Council Hughes. It's just that it's timing like if we if you guys want to have. If you guys decide to move forward and approve the installation of the two chargers. We need to move forward with the procurement and with contracting to be able to get the work done in time.
All right, thank you. All right, so no more further. No further questions. I'll accept your waving of notice motion. Want to enter in some sort of opening arguments? I think Mr. Hiltz just did it for you.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate and thank you, Mr. Hiltz for the the answer there. But my my understanding is that there's fairly long lead times for procurement of the actual charging station. There's largely times for contractors to do the work that would be required to support the electrical connection. To the charging station. There are supply chain constraints. To procure circuit breakers and those kinds of things that would be required. To be added to St. Albert Place to support the electrical connection. And part part of the big commitment is that in our granting process that. We have one year to actually get the units installed and working. That's the objective that we're given. Now we can ask for an extension if we're. Substantially complete, we can go back and ask for an extension. But this would allow us to get started quickly on both the procurement, hiring the staff, making all those changes. Over the summer and meet at least try and meet the one year target that's given. As part of the grant approval. So that's why I wanted to bring it forward ASAP. And to give staff and and administration enough time to actually start to work in. And have something in in place as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you, Council Jolly.
Thank you. So I'm going to be opposing waiving notice. Really, this is not an urgent issue. There are no. You know, I think the last time I supported waiving notice was for the fundraiser for Ukrainian. The Ukrainian fundraiser and that was, you know, very, very time sensitive. You know, I take my role really seriously when it comes to being informed about decisions we make and. And also in my commitment to making sure that the residents are given the opportunity to be involved. In our decision making process and and really by waiving notice, we'd be forcing an uninformed decision. I just saw your email this morning, Council Kilic with that you intended to bring this forward and. And I did not in that time research best practices for EV charging station locations. That just was not part of my morning today. And I also haven't weighed the capital cost with our other priorities. Again, I just. That wasn't in my timeline for this morning and. And really, I want the public to be able to weigh in in these types of decisions. So that's that's why I'm not supporting this today.
Council Hughes. Council Hughes.
I keep getting connectivity issues all of a sudden. I do not know why, but it doesn't like me all of a sudden. I had a question. Does it require majority support or two thirds support to pass? Or what is the requirement for it to be debated tonight?
I believe it's majority. But Mr. Flar will correct me.
That's not entirely clear from the procedure by law. There is a clause in the procedure by law that says that any provision of this by law can be waived for a council meeting or portion of a council meeting. By unanimous consent of all council members present and voting. Now, the question is, was that clause intended to cover waving? Dispensing with the 21 day notice or was it intended to cover more substantive procedural clauses in the in the bylaw? I honestly, I honestly don't know. Okay, it's something that the the chair will have to rule on whether unanimous consent is required or not. I can refer you to the precise clause in the procedure by law. If you'd like to to look at it, I can refer all of council to that. Assuming, of course, that my procedure by law was open, which it isn't. It'll take me a moment. I did have it here. I knew this question would come up and so I had it open and look at that. It's while I'm babbling, so I'll open it. So, yeah, the we're talking about procedure by law, if anyone has a copy of it. Paragraph 3.6, which states as follows. Council may waive all or part of the provisions of this by law for a meeting or for a portion of a meeting. If the counselors present vote unanimously to do so. So my. The reason I'm kind of a little ambivalent about whether that means that unanimous consent is required for this motion. Is because by by its very nature, it's a motion that doesn't. Restrict itself to this meeting, right? You're waving a 21 day notice period, which goes way beyond this meeting. So it may or may not apply. I think you could make an argument either way. But, you know, if I if I had to give you my best procedural advice is would be probably that it doesn't apply to this kind of thing. So that a majority vote is probably adequate. But I just wanted counselors to be aware that, you know, there is this. It's one of the many things that we'll have to deal with when we bring in a new procedure by law.
Okay. Thank you.
I I I, sorry, one more question is relative to this then. If it fails, for whatever reason, Mr. Hiltz, you answered before you said it was necessary for procurement. Could it still be done on August 15th? Like, would the world stop turning? Or is it going to be like you've lost the window if we do this on August 15th?
I think the biggest issue that Your Worship and Council Hughes is that. Timing, it's sensitive because we do have to deal with a lot of. Items that are almost outside of our control in our new world of supply chain issues, etc. We could probably do some. Work. Leading up to this, however, it would be if you guys decide on on the 15th of August to not proceed, then that work would be thrown out at that point of time. We do have to have the chargers installed by June of 2023. So basically, we would have to have everything in place by this winter. And then hopefully the the work would would be able to to move forward then in April, May and June. So it's 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 we just thought the the six weeks would be nice to be able to have right now or five, six weeks would be nice. Without lead time, however, if council chooses to wait till August 15th, we will make the best of it.
Okay, thank you. And I, Chris, I'm not, I don't know where I'm going to go on this. That's why I was asking these questions. It wasn't just from Council Jolly's statements, although they did lead to it. I. I have concerns about this entire project. I have concerns about how suddenly we this was project was approved without even having council.
We're just talking about waving notice. So let's just.
So I have concerns about all elements, not just this last add on that's being turned in the last minute. Well, the add on is whether or not we want to wave most emotion and not even have a background on it. So. The entire thing I find unsettling, so I don't really know where I want to go on it. That's my statement.
All right. So based on your advice, I'll go with majority vote.
I I I think that's the best way to interpret the procedure by law. Yes, that a majority vote would suffice. For this motion to pass and then the debate to occur tonight.
Okay. All right.
For the reason I gave.
Okay. See, no one else wanting to get on the wave. Oh, sorry. Oh. Sorry, Wes.
It's quite right, Madam Mayor. It's just the last comment. Raised a question with me. So as I understand, if we. We actually don't waive, and this comes for debate August 15th. We get an administrative backrounder. We get. Some sort of. Information in relation to the need of whether or at NACI or two would be suffice, those sorts of things. And it. It might put a time crunch on it, but it wouldn't eliminate the opportunity to to get. To at St. Albert Place.
That is correct.
Well, thank you for that because I understand the the intent behind the motion. Whether we need to waive or not is is the question.
Right. Seeing no one else wanting, I'll just, I'll just say, Council Koch, I'll support your waving. What notion? He doesn't, it hasn't. Okay, go ahead.
No, I I I didn't want to take away from that. I just. I just share my reluctance in relation to the fact that I don't have the information and I don't know if we're going to get the information afterwards. So I will, I I don't know where I'm going to go on the actual motion in front of us around waving. I just don't want to lose the vote. Afterwards, because I don't have information. So. I guess I can wait and see.
All right. I'll support you. And the reason is, is because I thought you gave. Not three weeks, but you, as soon as you this percolated in your head, you came out on Friday. We've had three days notice to at least do a little bit of research and etc. We've had three days' notice to at least do a little bit of research and, et cetera. Um, we had. All last week, we had emails going back and forth, answering a lot of the questions that I think a backrounder would answer. So, uh, I, and, and I do, I don't want to see wasted time by our staff over the summer in preparation for this, and then it fails in August. So I think we need to give our staff some indication of our support, uh, one way or the other for. Um, expanding the EV networks in, in St. Albert, so I'll support your waving. Anything to close?
Uh, yes, just to go back, as was mentioned, we, we got the first, uh, information that we've been successful. Uh, thanks to the work that, uh, staff had done in, in applying for this grant. Um, through the MCCAC, uh, the grant, uh, money that we received. That was communicated on June twenty-eighth. And, uh, as we all saw that, and it was going to be a notice out to the. Uh, public that we'd received this grant money, and this is where the stations were going to be placed. Uh, so we've had, uh, quite significant time already to have that information. And we exchanged, uh, emails back and forth with different comments and asked for clarification. So I think we have had time, um, and certainly I, I saw the emails, so I think we've had. Uh, lots of good input and back and forth on it, um, and this is just to. Uh, ratify the, the actual location and placement. Um, so by waving the twenty-one days, uh, I think we've had that, that opportunity for the input. Uh, it, um, is i- in my mind, a time-sensitive and workload-sensitive. That we don't want, it, it's not a big enough issue, I don't believe that we need to do a full backrounder and. And engagement of, uh, administration's time. We, we asked our questions through emails, we got good, clear answers, and I think that's adequate. To, at least for me, uh, to address any of the concerns, rather than going through a full, um. You know, backrounder and information requests, et cetera, so that's why I wanted to bring this forward in a more timely manner. And, uh, not overly complicate things, and, uh, uh. Hopefully, we can, we can have that debate this evening and give clear, clear, uh, decision to administration.
Call for the vote.
Voting's closed. The motion fails with, oh, sorry, with my, with myself, Council Mackay and Council Killer could favor, so we'll do it on the fifteenth. So notice of motion, we'll schedule that for the fifteenth. I need a motion to go in camera now. Oh, do you have, do you have one? Sorry, I hadn't, go ahead, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I'm just following up on, uh, I had initially put in an IR way back, uh, from a council meeting in. Um, somewhere around the, the, uh, cutting of grass around our community recognition. Uh, area and the northwest corner of Perrons and Sir Winston Churchill, and I received a reply back, so. From, uh, administration and staff that some of the work had already been done, and so I don't think there's any need to continue with the IR, so I. I, if you can formally remove the IR from that, and thank you very much for everybody's work. I still think the grass is too high, but that's a personal choice. But, uh, appreciate, appreciate the, uh, feedback.
All right, um, I know Council Kilik had some questions that you sent in. Thank you for sending them in on Friday. Or Saturday, so go ahead. Saturday.
Thank you. I had sent in three questions. Uh, one was about the, uh, progress on. Uh, looks like slow progress, uh, from my perspective, and number of residents. On the work on St. Albert Trail North Phase One, and the question. Came around, you know, the flowerbed or the, uh, topsoil had not been put in the medians, there was still a big pile of rubble. Uh, on the side of the road, and the old road bed had not been removed. And what, so the question was, what was, what is the, uh, completion date for? Uh, Phase One, and are we on schedule to meet that, and is, are we going to see any work in progress, uh? Over the next little while here?
Yep, your worship, um, through the counselor, Kilik, um, I'll take a stab at the initial answer and, uh, key staff are online if you want to go any deeper in this. But the bottom line is, as you're aware, uh, the multiple phases, uh, you proved Phase Two to start, uh, in the next little while. Phase One, initially a two-year program that was extended to a third construction season, and that sees, uh, the zone starting from Boudreaux up to Coal Mine Road. Um, the bottom line is that there is still Phase One work remaining, uh, and that is the Villanov Road. Roundabout that's, uh, actually making good progress and, uh, a number of improvements still on St. Albert Trail. Consisting principally of the plaza construction landscaping and intersection paving. Um, the reality is that Phase One work, uh, and we're in fact, work in the area will be, uh, continue on through twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four. And while it may look like no activity is taking place, um, it's actually quite the contrary from, uh, our perspective. And administration in conjunction with the contractors. Uh, there's work generally daily on the site, the issue obviously this year has been principally weather-related. Uh, and while it's raining, everybody understands that there's no work being done, uh, but if a previous day's rain was hard, then the materials need time to dry out. Uh, and we need to, uh, the contractors, in fact, uh, need to install pumps, uh, pumping out water, moving materials to dry out, et cetera. Uh, if the activities are pushed too hard, then the bottom line is that the, the material becomes inadequate to use, and the rework would actually take longer. Um, so, well, uh, a- again, um, certainly cognizant of the fact that there are times when folks drive by and it looks like nothing is getting done. In fact, I think the contractor's working very hard to the satisfaction of the administration at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, second question that is similar, construction-related, um, along, uh, St. Anne. Uh, niche developments, uh, St. Albert or St. A, St. A Square site. Uh, we all have seen that they've had numerous, uh, construction challenges. Um, but the, the question is around the, uh, barricades. Uh, can they be removed and the turn lane on St. Anne reopened up? And, um, and, and left open until we get a firm commitment from the contractor. Uh, that construction is going to resume, like, really resume. Uh, we've had various promises or, or, uh, commitments made. So it'd be nice to be able to, to see if we can have those construction barricades. And, uh, removed and the lane opened up for traffic, uh, and reinstalled at such times as real. Construction, uh, resumes.
So your worship through to Council Kilik, uh, thanks for the question. The, the short answer is, uh, no, it's certainly not recommended, and, and for the following reasons. First and foremost is a safety concern, um, so when the initial, um, preparation work was done, uh, for the development. Um, the, the sidewalk was stripped out, and the fencing now, um, reaches the actual roadway itself. So even if we were to move the, the concrete barriers that are in place, we would have fencing concerns, uh, both through the intersection. And, and obviously there'd be some, uh, some concerns to any pedestrian traffic as well. Uh, in mid-August, we intend to start, uh, work on city sewer line upgrades that will actually further restrict, uh, progress through that area. And to remove those barriers and have them put back in a few weeks, I think would be counterproductive in the long run. So our recommendation is certainly to leave them in place pending the completion of the city sewer line work. At that point in time, we'll have a better idea of, uh, the potential, uh, onward movement, uh, from niche development and St. A Squares, they work through their material issues.
Okay, thank you, and last question, um, in the June twenty-ninth Gazette. Uh, there was reported that there was no confirmed date for council to discuss the funding request. Uh, that, uh, the ACA funding request. And, um, my understanding is that we have commitment that that is on the August fifteenth council agenda. So I'd just like to ask that question publicly, so that we get, uh, uh, things straight. There, there were a number of residents that, uh, had approached me and ACA committee had approached me and to, to confirm. Uh, absolutely that, uh, that, that their funding request would be discussed at council on August fifteenth. And I understand they've met all of their, their requirements, so this, this question is based on. Uh, maybe some miscommunication that was, uh, in the Gazette, so I'd just like to get clarification on that.
Subject to final confirmation of the agenda, it is scheduled for fifteen August.
Thank you.
All right, I see Council Mackay's got his hand up, and then I'll go to Council Hughes and Council Jolly.
Yeah, I'll be quick, I'm just following up on a council inquiry submitted by Council Kilik, say that fast. Um, in the, um, kind of the, uh, grass cutting that was along St. Albert Trail. Particularly around the new sound barrier, and, uh, well, that, that seems to be, or appears to be addressed. I noted, uh, there seems to be a large number of trees planted over the last two years that are, are dying or certainly dead. I mean, I'm not an arborist, but I think I know, uh, I don't want to get into a Monty Python sketch, but, uh, I think I know a dead tree when I see it. So are we, are those trees still under warranty, or are there efforts to replace them?
Okay. So the, um, the portion of the lands of those trees are on are still under, uh, contractor's responsibility. Uh, the area has not been, hasn't received its final, um, acceptance certificate yet. And, uh, we are working with the contractor, um, to replace them, but until that time, um, we will not. Um, provide final approval of the acceptance, and we'd make sure that, uh, we would accept only healthy and, uh, established trees.
Thank you.
All right, questions? All right, Council Hughes.
Thank you, so, um, I had a resident approach me who lived, who backs on to Giroux, um, on the Combs side. And they are concerned about the noise issues, and they've been bringing this up now for quite a few years. And so the question I have is that, um, one, several years ago, is that they're going to do a, a noise study for that area. And the results of that noise study have not been released to them. So I'm wondering, was there a noise study done for the area from like Lockhart down to Bellrose, uh, High School? And, uh, Dean, and, um, if so, what did it come up with?
Uh, your worship will have, uh, Dean Schick answer this question.
And thank you, Carrie, uh, through Council Hughes. Yes, so the, there's actually Phase One and Phase Two of the noise study have been completed, and the information's available online through the city website. Uh, if any resident or council, uh, desires information, then just search noise study. And, um, ultimately, what the results showed is that, under current industry practice. They, the noise levels are not above the tolerant, typical tolerances of industry. What we are doing right now, though, is advancing Phase Three work, which is looking for problem sections in the city, high priority sites, which there is a location. Uh, on Giroux, um, in just slightly east of the Bellrose High School site. Then we're going to investigate what the boundaries are for the noise levels and, uh, what some mitigation measures may be to reduce it.
Okay, and when do you think you might have that done, just so if there's an expectation with timelines?
That should be done by, um, in Q four of this year. Well, we have, we have it in process right now. I'm committed to looking at five sites, inclusive again of the Giroux site. Um, which are the top priority sites, and we'll go through and again, kind of set the boundaries, identify what mitigation measures may be. Have some cost estimates, and then have this as information available for council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council Jolly.
Thank you, um, kind of a comms and, and public works question, um, do we have a map of. Naturalized areas and infographic or something like that explaining their purpose, um. Or a, a grass cutting schedule that we can share? I just know a lot of us are getting those questions, it'd be nice to have something easy to share.
Thank you for the question, Council Jolly, uh, through your worship. I'll ask Jay Mason to, uh, jump on to answer the question.
Uh, through the mayor, to, to Council Jolly, excuse me. Um, no, we don't have a, we, we have a general, uh, service levels for grass cutting that's posted, but not the actual schedule of where we're going to be on a day-to-day basis. Um, obviously, that's extremely weather-dependent, um, and so the impacts are. Uh, every time we see a rain, like, we're going to see tomorrow, that throws the, the whole schedule off by a full day. As far as the naturalized, uh, station schedule, um, or I'll have to talk to our environment department about, about where that sits. So they, they typically determine where the, uh, naturalized locations are. Um, so I can have a chat and just see if there's a way we can get that posted and some more information on that.
Great, thanks so much.
All right, I see no more questions, no more hands up to do notices, emotions or anything, so. Council Mackay noticed, motioned to go in camera, thank you, go ahead.
Uh, excuse me, that council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the Chief Administrative Officer pursuant to section twenty-four one. A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
Awesome, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, we'll meet in chambers.
I'm gonna close my door, so I'll be back in a sec.
Excellent, my people already left, so I'm good.
My people don't care, but I'll close the door anyway.
I've got ego here, that's it.
How big is ego now?
We weighed her today, so she's about forty-eight pounds.
Oh, my god. It's not petite. How big is she gonna get?
Probably not that much bigger. I, I would say she's gonna, she's eight months now, so not a whole lot bigger.
Oh, what kind of dog was she again? I forget.
Husky Shepherd cross.
It's not a pity, that's not a petite cross on a good day, so.
No, our last dog wasn't either, though, so, yeah, I like big dogs.
Okay, it's all good. You know what? Someone has to like the big dogs too, right?
Hmm, absolutely.
Always a good. So. Pardon?
She'll pull me skiing.
You have some really interesting screens coming up here for us.
Yes, it's like somebody's shopping for like furniture or something.
Big dogs are so hard to place, so it's good, like. You're a person who has a lifelong commitment to your dogs. I know some people that get them, and then they're like, oh, there's seven, I'm going to get rid of them now, and they're, but they're big dogs, and they're very hard to place them, so.
Yeah, no, my dog, we, my old dog, we kept, he was thirteen and a half, and we literally carried him into the vet, because he couldn't walk anymore.
Yeah, so, yeah.